Okay. Call the meeting to order at five o'clock. Some announcements, first and foremost, thank you to the DPW crews for dealing with multiple storms. Looks like we have more next week. They and their contractors have done a great job in town. Also, public safety has had to respond to a number of incidents this past couple of weeks. So appreciate dispatch, fire and police employees to their jobs. The first announcement is just public information. There's a landowner webinar series on conservation based estate planning. It's a three session series. It's all Zoom. There's a session, the first one is February 25th. There's one at the end of March and one at the end of April. And it's all free. So something to check out if you have property that you're considering that for. As always, call for volunteers. There's a complete list of openings on the volunteer tab on the town webpage. I would comment. None. We'll move on to item B, town manager updates.
First update listed on town manager updates, but this is regarding the meeting that both Chris and I attended last Monday. Northern Essex regarding Whittier Tech. You know, I don't really know what to say about it. It was a big meeting with a lot of people. It was, I included the materials that they had handed out. None of that was sent out ahead of time. It was all handed out at the meeting. So there was a lot to digest and really no time to digest it. It, you know, I think it was fairly superficial. Is that a fair summary?
Very much.
Like covered a lot, but didn't really cover.
The sales pitch.
Anything.
What was the stated purpose? I mean, was there like a clear purpose for me?
Probably. I don't want to sound cynical.
Okay.
But probably the purpose was to say that they had a meeting.
I think it was to bring parties back together and let's start the process. If I get into Jack two things.
Yeah.
It was, it was a. First of all, I think the idea was a great concept if we can get there. But they desperately avoided the conversation about changing the regional agreements still. So until you have that conversation, other than the fact it has to be done by July 1st, per the state's mandate, that was a comment made. The other thing is what I.
Can you ask a question? Go ahead. In the sub that was printed, that I think was from that meeting. There was, I swear, one reference to a need for.
I don't recall. It was couch very cautiously when they talked about it. Nobody wants to. It seems like it's the hot potato, but that's going to be the driver.
Yeah.
And the focus was more about the mixed campus blend and how it would work. I think that's a great idea. And some people are concerned, you know, younger kids with the older kids and all that. But they said there were four levels of collaboration to be presented. And they said, two schools on one split campus, two schools on one campus with shared services, two schools on one campus with shared services and shared spaces. And then merging of Northern Essex and Ridda into one all new entity. And the first and the last probably not on the table. So it'd be like basically two schools on one campus with shared services or with shared facilities and shared services. So that's what they're hoping this Donahue Institute is going to distill it down towards.
So. Okay. So the waste water treatment plant upgrade for $11 million, that's to stay on their campus, right? I don't, I didn't follow.
Marie got into a hole at one point. She started talking about all the upgrades that are needed on their campus and went through them all. So yeah, they have five year capital plan.
So it's still justifying that they need something, is that?
Yeah, we did ask the question about whether the potential option to tie into Meramec sewage system was, had been fully explored. And she said that it had and that it wasn't viable. And Carol McLeod was there and she, she was kind of nodding her agreement that it hadn't been viable. I inferred it's something due to maybe DEP limitations on Meramec, what their, what volume their.
It was a hard no, whatever it was.
Correct.
They got was from some regulatory.
Yeah, something from the state, it seems, was, had kind of nipped that.
But they did talk about 11 to 13 million dollars to all new plant. But then they, it came back about maybe there's a possibility to repair and slightly upgrade the existing. So who knows? That was one of five items on their capital plan coming up, so.
So I guess what I'm confused about is why are they discussing that if the push is to join campuses with Northern Essex?
Because that's down the road many years.
Okay, so this is kind of an interim share?
Yeah. It seems probable, but it's going to take eight or 10 years. That's what they sort of applied. I mean, that was my guess. I didn't, I made that number.
No, but that's what they're applying to.
Very much so, yeah.
Yeah.
They also talked about their cost of new feasibility study. I don't have my notes handy, but I want to say it was going to be under your $2 million. That ring a bell, Chris?
2.7.
For feasibility study?
Yeah. Critical issues.
Including, I believe, the, the design and getting through the MSBA process.
The other thing I found curious, I didn't say, because my, I was going to just be quiet at that meeting. They give their five capital things. Number five, which I mentioned at this meeting before, the brick exterior at the Poet's End, the masonry needs to be repaired. They went X amount. You've got masonry students here. That's a pretty good project. You don't need money.
Yeah. I think that should be an operating on maintenance costs.
Should be a class lesson.
Yeah.
Future.
So when is the next meeting scheduled for?
They didn't set a date.
Roughly four weeks from then, they're expecting the Donahue report in three weeks. You requested a week to review it.
Yeah, that, that was the point I made is, is, you know, we don't want to get that report as we're walking in or two days. You know, I, I've kind of made the point, we're in budget and town meeting season. And, and, you know, I kind of speaking for my counterparts in other towns. Like we need to, I, I said, we, we really need to have at least 10 days with this report before the next meeting. So we actually have time to read it. All right, next one, Middle Street Bridge. I think we had the, the pre-construction meeting on the day of your last meeting. So you know, that took place. What's been going on since that time is really coordination primarily on issues of the de-watering, location of de-watering, as well as site security, which has been working with Paul and the contractor on installing cameras. There's actually a couple of different things going on. I think the contractor is going to have like video surveillance. But the town is working to set up a static, more of like a hunting cam from like a, the same angle and to have a shot taken, I don't know if it'll be daily, but like regularly throughout the project. So on the backend of this, we can do like a time lapse kind of showing the whole construction, which actually that idea came from John Eric at reconstruction meeting. We all liked it, so, which has been out there a couple of times.
That'd be great film.
Wouldn't that be cool to kind of see any of us? So we're pretty excited.
I asked them to do that when they did the high school project and they never did.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, I think we did that at governor's and there was actually blasting involved. So that was really cool.
Did you get the blasting?
Yeah, they did. I mean, they blasted twice a day for like three weeks. So, yeah.
You didn't actually get a, a charge going off though?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they did.
Oh, interesting. I guess, actually, I'm thinking this, it's, you know, imagining that it's a, you know, with a lot of step line, but obviously there is. Yeah.
So, yeah, so, so, you know, it's, it's going forward.
That's great.
And the system we've set up between our office and the finance department and the reverse fork on, on sharing invoices. That's all, you know, working well. We haven't had any, you know, project invoices, but just for like PSC's work or whatever. We've got a, a good system, a good kind of workflow of making sure that the voices are getting the right sets of eyes and the right sign off before they pay you.
Have they, have they begun to deploy any of them there yet?
Ah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I do, I do know they met onsite on Monday, which was part of that, along with Chief Dwyer and their counterparts in Newbury Port. I didn't attend that one, but I think the, the focus of that was security, where the fences are going to be put, how, you know, whether they're closer in, which will constrain work all around the bridge or further away, in which case, I mean, realistically, and Wayne's really made this point, Wayne actually is on here right now, he just makes the point. But he's saying like the teenagers are going to go where they're going to go. There's going to be so much you can do about that. But, so yeah, I think Monday, the, the focus was kind of site security. Then just in terms of a couple of general items, we are gearing up for the joint meeting this coming Wednesday between the select board and the planning board regarding the MBTA communities. We had, I think, a productive meeting on Tuesday afternoon, myself, Wendy, along with the town planner and Ray and Brian and Ted Ammon. And just to talk about kind of coordinating information, communications on that. There's a huge amount of information and we want to make sure that as this gets into the town meeting cycle with warrant articles, that there's, you know, that people don't get lost in the huge amount of information that we can get people focused on, on kind of the, the studies that were done, the current draft zoning and so forth. So I think that was, that was helpful to be able to talk through some of those logistics before we get into the joint meeting between the two boards next Wednesday.
Yeah, I think Bill probably, we, we can discuss with the planners for publicity. The public hearings were talked about pushing out to March 18th, the first one, instead of doing on the fourth. And the other thing is that originally, originally we were talking about the select board taking a vote and the planning board taking a vote on which property. And I think a better approach would be for the planning board to make their decision. Maybe we can participate in the decision, but have them vote and then we can vote to refer it for a public hearing rather than putting us on the spot to vote for it. So that sounds all right. That's the way we'll proceed.
I think, you know, from previous meetings, that was my strong preference. So I appreciate that.
Okay.
So on that one, we did get the draft traffic impact study that came in late Monday night. We had a remote meeting with TEC Tuesday afternoon to, to review that, by which point I'd read and gotten comments. My comments were very minor in nature. I thought they really did an excellent job. So we left it that they were going to send us a final report. We expected that, you know, yesterday, today, I'm sure coming tomorrow. But, you know, once we get that, we'll send that around. That would be part of the package materials for next Wednesday's meeting. It's a, I think it's very good. It's, it has a lot of objective data on traffic volumes, traffic speeds, site distances, you know, basically comparable factors between the sites. So I think it will definitely be helpful to the, to the boards and the planning board in particular in distinguishing between the two sites. The other item for next Wednesday, we'll have the presentation of fiscal impact study, which I guess you've already seen. And we also have the work ongoing with Lantech, the kind of designer evaluating the build out potential of each site under current zoning relative to what, what the Dawson and Flinker had, had projected under the MBTA. So that's not going to be ready for next Wednesday, but that will be ready, we expect by the end of this month. And then the other, you know, another thing that's been a significant focus recently, working with Jenny and Caitlin in the water department on the managing the, the gap there. We'll be transitioning away from bond anticipation notes, going to long-term borrowing this cycle. So we had a pretty substantive meeting with Hilltop on Monday to go through the scenarios. And they're working on projections right now of what the borrowing terms might be. So we can get that information to Mark and Jody through the water commission to review. They, they've got a meeting posted for Tuesday morning at, I think, 10:00. Where they'll be, I'll read them at their draft project for that work coming next.
Are you planning to go to that, Rick? Or are you going to go?
I hadn't thought about that yet. When, when is it again?
About 10:00 on Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Were you planning to go in this?
Yeah, I'll be there. I, I do have an 11:30 meeting at Kentucky, so I told Jody I have to leave by 11:15, but that should be plenty of time.
Okay. I think as long as Angus is there, it's not.
Yeah, no, it's not a problem as long as you don't have something else.
Sure.
And that, yeah, that'll work fine.
Right. Thank you.
I think that brings us to 5:15.
Okay. So let's see, item C is department updates. The first item is an update from the city of Newbury Port on their water capital improvements program. So I just want to say that the focus of this is on parts of their program that impact West Newbury or are, you know, in West Newbury. So they just have a kind of slimmed down version of the whole thing. So we have Wayne Amaral here, who's the director of public works and Tom Cusack, the water superintendent. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can.
So I'm not sure if my consultant is on board yet, but I, I think they'll be logging on any minute.
He's waiting in his hands. Yeah, he's.
He's here with us.
Okay.
He's on the screen. Speak up.
Well, I was trying to save them from going in person, but okay, that's great. Thank you. I'm, I'm doing it remotely because we've been in snow operations since six o'clock this morning. So we're up here. I thank you for allowing us this time to touch base with you for Newbury Port and our water division to opportunity to discuss a CIP program with you back a year, a year ago, maybe a little bit less. We presented a CIP to you, this program here, version like six. We're up to version eight. Not much has changed from that presentation. What we have been doing is we've contracted with the PA group, engineering firm, and Rob Demarest is, is here and Alex Richards is also attending and Tom Cusack from Newbury Port, as you said, is attending. And we've prepared the CIP and we asked PA to help us prioritize what's the most important projects we want to do in the near future. Maybe what we want to do now, what we want to do three years from now, what we want to do seven years from now, what we want to do for 10 years from now. So we're hoping to gain guidance and from PA on what we should be focusing on in the near future and later on for funding requests. We like to run, I like to run this by you real fast. I've got copies to hand out to people if I was there, but I'm not there. So I would love to hand that out, but it looks like you don't have many people there anyhow. I like to go through, I think just the first seven or eight of them actually relates to West Newbury. But obviously I'm welcome to listen to anything else that you guys might have or comments for. We're looking for, for your input on what you think is important that we should be looking for from Newbury Port that benefits West Newbury and our water system that we have there. PA will ask some open-ended, some questions, vague or in detail questions about what they're using to help prioritize program. I just want to run through the program real fast. I'll do it real quick because I know we don't have much time. Angus, I don't know if you could draw up the version.
I had them up, so I'll do a share screen right now.
Sure.
For those of you who are low.
Yeah, I should also say, we have Mark Marlowe, the West Newbury water superintendent here as well.
Hi, Mark. So I just want to run through some of those real questions, remind, reminders of the first one is WA-01, which is the Indian Hill story of lift station upgrades. That is really important to us. It's one of our priority ones because our equipment in that station is now outdated and we can't get the parts to actually upgrade the pump station anymore. So we need to do a major renovation to the pumps to get it back up to par. So we could actually keep maintaining water. This original one was lumped in the phase one Indian Hill pipeline project. We pulled it out because this is important and we want to do this one ASAP. The second one is WA-02.
Was as much as I saw.
Which is phase one of the Indian Hill. Which is the Indian Hill raw, raw water line, which we're at roughly at 30%. And I think we, Tom, I think you were able to send the, the plans to Angus and for them to look at and review in the, and, you know, when, when you have a chance to look at that. WA dash 02 dash 2 is phase two of the Indian.
Pause right there for a just full remote. I did, as you know, the 30% design plans that Tom sent over, which I appreciate. Thank you for that. They were too large to email, but they are posted to the website. They're on the select board page under select board meeting packets. So I've got that up on the screen as opposed to supplement packet in Indian Hill reservoir. So you could just, if anyone watches from home, you know, that's all 445 pages.
Great reading, great reading. And then we have Indian Hill phase two, which is WA dash 02. That's an additional pipeline that's going from the outer choke all the way up to the Indian Hill reservoir. That one, we don't have a date when we're expect, we, we looking to do this one. But this is, I think unofficially, one of our long-term improvements that might be 10 plus years down the road. So we haven't engaged West Newbury in detail yet on this. We will, once we realize, once we get the PA prioritization report back from them, if this ranks high, then obviously we have to reach out to, out to you guys because this is for the next three to five years. We want to start this conversation with you early than, than, than later. But right now this project is probably some time away, but we want to show it because it's important to us. And maybe we decide to go with this direction based on the independent study. The next one is WA-03, which is a lower outer choke reservoir dam improvement project. We've done some temporary emergency repairs out there to protect the spillway. And we have some other, we have other improvements we like to do out there that we're still in the process of designing. And we need to know if we're going to go forward on the next phases. At that time, we definitely need to get West Newbury deeply involved because it's right on the line with, with, with the town of West Newbury. Project.
Wait, wait, will there be opportunity for any questions about these after you've done?
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. We'll, we'll, we'll open up for quick questions after I do a quick rundown on anyone you want to ask. And then we'll let PA come in and ask their questions to you and the board, to the, to the water board and yourself. WA dash 04 dash one is short-term watershed public supply protection program. And then WA dash 04 dash two is long-term ones. And Tom can get into detail if you want detail about those two programs, those two also. Another important one was the last one, I think, that really affects West Newbury. All the rest really have very few effects to West Newbury is, I think, a sensitive one right now. It's important to us and Newbury Port is the water treatment plant PFAS filtration system upgrades to the plant, which is a big item right now, as you see there. So those are the projects that affect West Newbury. We're ranking all of them, obviously, with PA is ranking all of them to see which one is really important and which ones we should be seeking funding in the near future and outreach to start the next phases of design or initial design. So we'd be happy to take questions on each one or anywhere you want to go. And then I would ask PA to jump in after your questions and ask their questions to help get information from, from West Newbury on what, what you prioritize or what you find critical.
Yeah, I guess I have two related questions. And they each relate to the lower artichoke reservoir. First one is a year, I think it was the number two project was the phase one of the Indian Hill raw water lines where you're thinking of putting a, or the idea is to run a pipeline, basically following the original stream bed along up the length of the lower artichoke reservoir to allow you to access water directly from the upper artichoke as opposed to pumping directly from the lower artichoke. And, and my question related to that is what, when and if that gets to the top of the pile and you execute their, that project? Is there any consideration? Because I thought at one point I had heard reference to this of dredging the lower artichoke to try to get more volume. Well, you know, once you have an alternate place to draw your water from, meaning above, above the lower artichoke, is there any consideration of dredging the lower artichoke in order to gain vault, storage volume there? That of course then would then somehow pair with the dam reconstruction, the, the raising the dam that contains the lower artichoke? And, and I'm presuming that, because I know this has been some, I've heard some concern here, which I don't think is correct. That's presuming that raising the dam at the, of, that retains the lower artichoke is not intended to increase volume. It's simply to provide protection from backflow from the Meramec River. So that was kind of complicated. It was two questions, but.
Sure. I'll go the one that I remembered last is the low artichoke dam. I don't believe that's a capacity issue. I think that's a protection issue, Tom, if I'm not mistaken. And we haven't gone, we haven't gone further enough into the design, but that's the premises. Is that it would be a protection measure and not a capacity measure. The dredging, to dredging would help us with capacity, obviously. But we're already up to $68 million worth of improvements, possible improvements. If we were up to $10 million for improvements, dredging would probably make this list, honestly. But I think dredging is so far out and the cost of dredging made it fall off this list. Not saying it doesn't go back on here in the future as we start looking at this stuff. But as we start talking about dredging, it spins, it spins our head around because it's a different beast of its own. And I think we try to do our best to prioritize what was real with knowing that dredging might be 20 years out and might be beyond this scope we're talking right now. But it has been discussion between Tom and John Eric and our consultant. Tom, can you add anything to that? Am I?
Yeah, so the dredging would not increase volume. The dredging would really be focused on decreasing nutrients that are already within the reservoir. So it's not, it's definitely not something that, at, at least at this point anyways, that they would consider dredging to the point where you would be getting more volume out of that, that body of water.
Okay.
Tom, you might get something, but it won't be as, as modular, it'll be modular increase with the dredging if you did that for just cleaning up, correct?
Yeah, I think the focus would be getting rid of the nutrients.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So the water quality is, I guess, okay.
Yeah. So I don't think we're selling it as a capacity issue, as an increased capacity at all for, 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 for the dredging. And, and what was your first question? It was about the pipeline.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is if you put the pipe, assuming that the pipeline gets, phase one of the pipeline gets constructed, that was, the dredging came after that because you wouldn't be able to dredge if you were drawing that reservoir. You would, you know, you wouldn't be able to dredge that reservoir if you, if it was appropriate until after you no longer needed to draw from that reservoir.
Absolutely, you're totally correct. And that's one part. And the second part is if we actually have a backwater event, as you know, that's why I do the pipe in the first place. I think if we have a backwater event, God forbid, we'll be able to take that outer choke, low outer choke down, out of service and pump from the fresh water up above. So it's a two-fold improvement on that one. Tom, anything to add to that one? Would I cover that one?
Uh, no, no, that's, the idea is to be able to have two, two intakes at the, at the moment. And then, you know, maybe possibly build off of that. But with the two intakes, general consensus is it would be an easier job to manage as far as dredging. Just being able to, let's say, take the lower offline if you decide to dredge that or vice versa with the, with the upper. Although the volume would, would have to be a concern. So, yep.
No. Wayne, I just had one question on the raw water line. The, what is the status of that federal grant? Is that still?
Great question, Wendy. I can't answer that question right now. We have a contact at the state and all Tom and I are here in a crickets right now. He's a great person, he's very responsive to us. As of December something, Tom, I think we emailed him. Then we haven't heard much since January on that at all. So I have to be honest with you, it's been, it's been crickets.
Yeah. Mark, did you have any questions that you wanted to ask at this point?
No, I'm good right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to note that one of the concerns I'd heard from attending water commissioners meetings was that there was concern that the raising the dam would somehow impact West Newbury's well field. And that was why I made, wanted to make the point that it wasn't going to raise the water. It was simply going to provide protection to the reservoir. And, and so, Mark, I don't know if, you know, I don't know what your concerns are or anybody else, any of your commissioners' concerns are now relative to the relationship between raising the dam and, and.
But going back to Michelle, when talked about what they wanted to do, they originally wanted to dam up right across the front of it, which I don't believe they can do now. They need to leave that swale that runs by my gate open so that that can, that can flood back. It would, I don't believe the dam project is going to dam up as much as it originally had to our concern. So I think they've covered some of it. I still have to look and see what their plans say. But Michelle, when she was here, said that they wouldn't be able to close it as much as Newbury Port wanted to. And I think Newbury Port picked up on that and adjusted.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure we got that concern off the table.
Sure, Rick, I could just add that it has been a conversation internally with staff, with John Eric, the city engineer and Tom and I, and consultants about, you know, what's the process of raising if we want to, if we can't. As per the regulations right now, I question if we could actually raise, if we wanted to, even the lower or the upper artichoke with what's, what is regulated by DEP. However, we have had that conversation. I don't think we have an answer. I tend to think we can't do it, but we have asked that question with how we do increase capacity. But I don't think we're prepared to answer that right now without more information.
Right.
That's a good question.
Wayne, there's a lot here on the table.
Wayne, there's a lot here on the table, I mean, almost $70 million. You have a general, I know the timeframe has got to be unbelievable, you've got to prioritize, and I assume they're in the, the sequence you prefer to do them in. You know, so the item number WA one, I don't know what the timeframe is on that versus all the way down the list. Now you indicated 10 years to put the piping under the, to move the water back and forth, so. Generally, what are we looking at?
The great, that's a great question, Chris, we really need to put a line somewhere in here, which is attainable and what isn't attainable within a timeframe. We are not doing $68 million worth of work in the next 10 years, I promise you that. So where is that, where is that line, is it three down, is it three projects or is it four projects? So we're going to try what, what Par gives us for information to give us a real. Point to, to, to go after, we, we're not going to bond $68 million, we're not going to get enough funding. Grants, SRF, anything you want, we're not going to get 68 in the next 10 years, I believe. However, can we handle $30 million worth of projects, maybe? Can we deal with 20, maybe, so we need to find that line, how much we could borrow. How much we, we could, we could afford, and then we're going to bring that real lineup. So this page that Angus is showing on page 16, will have a black line somewhere in between those categories of what, what is. I don't want to say what is real and what isn't real, but what is attainable and what isn't really attainable in the near future. So I think we're going to have a near future category, then our wish lists of projects that we maybe file for grants and. And, and, and try to get grant money to do some other stuff, but in reality, this is our wishlist. And we understand that, you know, there's a good chance that most of, some of the stuff won't be done while I'm still alive. But it's, there's important things here, we need to help, so we prioritize as far as.
Be the earliest, I mean, the first one, the upgrades to the lift station, what, is that one year, five years?
I would, we, we, we have to do that now, like yesterday, so I would say I can't, I can't. Speak for city council or the water sewer board who's going to approve this stuff. But for our priority, we would consider the Indian Hill Sturyav Pump Station a number one priority right now. So it'd be within the next two or three years, it should be done even sooner than that, so.
I have two brief follow-up questions, Wayne, to, to Chris's question. One is, you know, I know at the top of this slide it says key water projects, I know that what we're looking at here is, is nowhere near the full water CIP.
It, it, it's the published CIP we have right now Angus, we have some notes, we have some notes, but this is what we're saying is, is, is our key water projects. We have a handful of other stuff, but it didn't make this list, so, you know, it's got to be hard time making it onto this list.
Okay, all right, the second question embedded in Chris's question was kind of a. Suggestion that the sequential numbering one, two, three, four is illustrative of the city's kind of ranking, but if I understood.
It's not.
Like, it is not, yeah, I, I didn't think it was, and so I just wanted to get that out there because I, I didn't think it was, because I think that's really. And that's probably a good segue for Par, because I think that's why they're here, is to help the city arrive at something that's actually, that can stand behind us. You know, a clear statement of, of order of priority.
So, so to be transparent, we have an RFP for WA zero eight right now. That kind of go out to, that's going to go, go, go out to be advertised in the next month or two. So WA zero eight water meter replacement program, we have already prepared an RFP to get vendors in to talk about that already.
Water meter?
Our water, I'm sorry, wa, WA zero nine, water meter replacement.
Got it.
That one is already out for an, we, we, we don't have the funds for it, we don't have 2.7 times two, because that's only the water department's funding of it, it's another 2.7 for sewer. That one, we actually have an RFP out, so obviously that one is top of the list because we've already funded and designed, we already did the RFP. And that one, we don't have a choice because our meters, the battery life on our meters are going to expire and we're not going to be able to work our meters until.
You, you need to do that in order to maintain a revenue stream.
Correct, yes, yes. So that, those numbers mean nothing, so.
Anything else you're selling?
Thank you, Robert Tamaris from Par Corporation. We were hired by the city of Newbury, Newbury Port as an independent consultant to review their water capital plan and prioritize it for them. And basically the methodology we're going to use is we looked at all these projects, just the projects here, nothing else. Reviewed them for cost factors, criticality and sort of overlapping objectives to come up with a matrix to kind of. Balance, you know, prioritize which ones would be the most important in our opinion for Newbury Port to pursue. The reason for being here is Wayne pointed out, to seek your feedback on, you know, do you have any inputs, anything that's critical to West Newbury? Regarding these projects. So, you know, where, what's critical to West Newbury, some cost factor that impacts you. That, you know, any impacts to the, the community itself and so forth, that's what we're looking for. And just, you know, obviously we only have a few minutes left, but just a real brief feedback, I'm sure will be more important in the future.
Yeah, so I, I think overall what's important with Newbury is some kind of municipal agreement that dictates the amount and the cost of water. So any of these that kind of dovetail into that, you know, that's an important factor to consider. We also have Jack doing here who's a water commissioner, if you have anything to add, feel free.
Well, sorry, I didn't get here at the beginning, but I have a couple of questions, I don't know. Well, just to answer them with.
Yeah, let's finish this part.
Oh, in terms of product, town interests?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, I mean, my opinion on that is. Until we see their plans, we really can't. Give them an opinion, which is here in, like for the, the lower. Hydro choke reservoir watershed based plan, we never got a chance to provide our opinion to that. And now the Merrimack Valley River Watershed Association, whatever, is saying this is a good starting point. And it's like, our points, our concerns haven't even been addressed. So to comment on the pipeline plan, the dam plan, which we have received no plans for, it's way, way premature. And I fear that, you know, we get too far ahead of ourselves.
So the question is not actually to comment on the plans, it's what, what are the priorities for West Newbury? Do we have anything to add as they try to prioritize their capital projects on?
Well, for example, for the dam, our, our critical asset is the pump station. We don't really know what the dam project is in terms of what the impacts on rising water table or where. Rising water, sea level rise will impact our fields, we, we don't have that reported. I think you guys are maybe have a 30% plan or something like that in your design. I don't know if you've got that.
It's on the website, yeah, so 30% on the, the. The upgrade.
Well, it's based on the pipeline, not, not of the dam.
No, we haven't, so, you know.
There, there isn't a 30% plan.
Oh, I don't know, whatever, whatever plans have been designed, I know that the town, the city engineer has talked at a public meeting saying there's no way back to. The West Newbury wellfields, well, we can't make that judgment, what's the basis for their making that judgment? It's good for us to be able to do some peer review.
Yeah, agreed, so this, this meeting time, they're very focused, interest in their CIP plan. And so they fired a consultant to prioritize their water capital projects. And as a courtesy, they're asking us for input, maybe not a courtesy, some of it directly impacts us, so. So that's why Wayne went through and summarized really briefly each of the projects and they're asking for our input.
Well, I, I guess I would say whatever they have prioritized planned is, let us. Give, give us an opportunity to review the details and, and we, we can work in that. You know, in that step-by-step process, I, I think that's good.
Okay, do you guys have any?
Yeah, the other thing I'd say is I wanted, when, when and if the raw water part, pipeline phase two comes up. You know, the, the town would, should be involved in the conversation right from the outset. Because that, you know, that will directly impact the town, it will directly impact our roads, it'll, it'll directly impact. A number of other characteristics in the town. And, and, you know, we'll, that'll be important for, you know, for the town to be involved in the conversation.
Understood.
Right, right from the start, you know, before, before it's down the road and too, too late to make new considerations.
Well, they're pulling street opening permits, yeah.
So when, but Wendy said, and Rick, and I think it's critical that. We need a long-term agreement, we don't have a current agreement, the water sources in the town. It goes to Newbury Port and sells back to us at retail rate. I think there needs to be more of an overall partnership between West Newbury and Newbury Port generally on the water. We, we get the information, sometimes Jack was only to after the fact. This is a good start, I just hope it keeps moving forward this way that we're. I think we should be considered partners, because particularly when you get to these, the rosters lining along the streets and things like that. You know, West Newbury needs the water, Newbury Port can benefit from selling it to us, and I think there's a. More fully developed partnership that needs to be looked at rather than a battle all the time.
You meant raw water.
Right. We just want the water.
Angus, do you have any input on priorities to that?
No, I mean, I, you know, I, I think Wayne and his, his team, and I, I believe he's made, I, I know for certainly he's made part. Aware of the 1908 legislation, the specific language in there vesting, you know, some amount of oversight in the select board in terms of any work within public ways. That's obviously, you know, we talked recently, and so, you know, we just. We don't need to have lawyers go back and forth like, but the spirit of that is, you know, just exactly what Rick said, that, that the town needs to be. Part of that conversation right from the outset, anything, anything, any work geographically within the town of West Newbury, I think at this point. The city, at least at a staff level is, is keenly aware of that, and I, I think you're, you understand that, so. It's that, you know. Yeah, and, and I think, you know, there's obviously, you know, what Chris said, there, this is, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for. Collaboration on this that I think is to mutual benefit, not just on infrastructure planning, but also some of the. Cities objectives on a more of a watershed-based approach to, to resource management.
So, yeah, yeah, it seems that we both, both communities stand to benefit if we work together and end up with a more secure. Water source, and that's, I think, will be all our focus on is personally, you know. The long-term benefit to both communities.
I'm not sure that's the kind of feedback you're looking for, but.
Well, I mean, it's valuable feedback and we certainly understand, but, you know, if there's. You know, you sort of get your water from Newbury Port, so like if they, you know, their, their priorities are somewhat your priorities. So, yeah, exactly, so we understand that, but, you know, just take this opportunity, we would take, wanted to take this opportunity to discuss it with you. So I'm sure there'll be follow-up as we proceed, so.
That's complete, Rob, so Wendy, I think it's just because our priorities, as we talk it out internally between the city staff ourselves. If you asked us a year and a half ago, it was PFAS, and then we were worried about a backwater event. So we started to prioritize phase one pipeline, then we had a backwater event and we realized it really wasn't a big event as we thought it was going to be. So we refocused ourselves back to PFAS again, so it's this moving target of trying to figure out what is the most important things to look at. As time changes and the climate changes around us, so we would just want to touch base with you and see if there's something that's pressing that West Newbury's concerned about. If PFAS is what you're hearing and you're concerned and you're like, we want you really focus on PFAS. We welcome those comments, if you're worried about a backwater event because you've seen the artichoke every day. Then we want to know that, I think we, like Rob said, we all have the same interest, we want to protect our resource. Whatever, whatever way, strategy we're going to do it in, so we would just, we just want to touch base and just get, if you had something you really feel strong about. That's, you know, we weren't asking you to rank it one to 10 or anything like that.
Right, right, no, we really appreciate the effort to include us, Mark, did you have any comments on priorities or are you good?
No, I think we're looking pretty good, I think like Wayne said, we'll see what, what they, how they rank, I mean, we'll go from there.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, thanks a lot for. To everybody on Newbury Port, related to Newbury Port, for, you know, for presenting to us, because I think it, it's, it's really important that we have, you know, collaboration as, as you move along.
If I, if I could, I want, this, I think a, a quick question, but this is to Wayne, one thing I think could be helpful to, to everybody here is. Give us a little insight, I think the slides say, set out at least what I, I refer pretty clearly in terms of the. The sequence and division of labor between, for instance, the water and sewer commission, the city council and mayor. If I'm, if I'm following this properly, basically the, your team works with the water and sewer commission to come up with the capital program that they prioritize. But then it's still got to obviously go through, get endorsed by the council and ultimately it's the council and the mayor that are going to turn, determine what's going to get funded. Is that, is that reasonably accurate?
Exactly, exactly.
So one thing that I think, I remember a couple of years ago when you were on the side of the pond. You know, you and I were looking at, you know, the city's capital program, seeing Middle Street Bridge, we were seeing it in the year, I forget what year it was, feels like a decade ago. But, you know, and, and it was stated there, it had a dollar sign and it said fiscal 21 or whatever year that was. And, and as we dug into it, it's like, and I remember meeting with, with Mayor Holiday, and well, well, just because it's in there, it doesn't actually mean it's funded. So that's, which I think we understand that now. But, but I think that as people look at the document and they see things in year one, year two, year three. I think it's important for every, for us to understand. That just because it's in the capital program and reflects the endorsement of the water sewer commission, or even if it reflects the endorsement of the city council. That's different than an appropriation and that project actually going forward. So is that accurate, or do you want to like refine what I've said?
Nope, you're exactly right, we, the water, DPS, the water sewer commission could truly believe that these are the most important things listed in order. Once we go to city council, they could decide that it's not a priority to them and they could. Recommend that our priority is not their priority and just, and tell us to focus on a different priority. Then decide when we're going to fund it, at the end of the day, they have the last voice, the last vote on if they authorize the bond request. It's the board, so it goes to the mayor, it goes to the city council, and the city council has to sign off on the bond request.
All right, great, well, thank you Wayne, appreciate the effort, thanks Tom.
Thanks, good to see anybody again.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is installation of solar panels on the housing authority roof, so that's started, right?
It did, yeah, and this is, I don't know if you want to lie, but it's very exciting, I mean, it's just a wreck.
I haven't, I haven't actually seen what's gone on.
No, I haven't either, I just saw the, the notice and, but you know, a direct outcome from the solar site feasibility study. In a straight line, that study, I don't know if you want to give people background of how it came to be.
Well, yeah, I mean, we did the solar site feasibility study, we, we made it known to. To the housing authority that, you know, that their roof was on a list. And I think, I think they just took the initiative and reached out to power options. So I, it's not completely clear to me. But I think that that was the way it happened, is that they reached out to power options who then connected them with the. Vendor that they're working with now, and, and. It took a little, you know, I, I went to one of their meetings and had to explain to them, and it took a little. Reassurance that it was actually a smart thing for them to do, and, but they, they, ultimately they approved it and. It's a PPA, so they're not going to own the system, but, you know, the, the terms. Are, I think, exceptionally favorable financially for that housing authority. You know, it's going to save them a bunch of money over the years.
Okay, the next item under board mission, many updates, cable advisory committee, five-year budget proposal.
So I had included in the packet what we had received, they had met last night and refined out a little bit, and I think there's really twofold. The purpose of that one is the kind of, you know, what we need for next year's warrant article in terms of what the amount is. And I think I emailed the board earlier today based on the information coming out last night that. That we have an amount that they've recommended for like 26. But they've also looking ahead over five years, that's more to inform consideration of potential terms for. Renewal cable license agreement, so that's kind of beyond the scope of tonight's discussion, but, but generally, that's why they had presented a multi-year. Projection, obviously there's some things in there that, you know, raised some eyebrows in terms of whether that's, you know, needed or warranted. But I don't know how, how much you want to get into that.
Yeah, so I think because. I think we have overall like vision for what the, to do with the peg funds and, and how to manage this going forward, cable is becoming less, you know, of a thing. And probably going to shift to, you know, shift to other ways of communicating information. Probably going to shift to, you know, shift to, um, other, um, ways of communicating information. Um. So given that, um, the decision last night was to push off capital, um, you, you received the updated spreadsheet, right? Today, I think Angus sent it last night, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did, but I confess I didn't get through.
So the difference is that instead of having forty-five thousand dollars capital improvements, FY twenty-six, they pushed that out to FY twenty-seven. So next year will just be much as this year, and that will give us time to do some long-term planning. Uh, renegotiate the contract and, and move forward. I do think it's worth, you know. Us providing some feedback to them about what we want the, the committee to be focusing on, where our vision is.
I don't even know if it's forty-five thousand is four. It's just, it's just numbers. And then all you see the rent for. Twenty-four thousand, that's ninety-six grand. There's a lot of numbers that are pretty big for their budget that are concerning, raised eyebrows, as you said.
Yeah. So the, the rent, the idea with that is to have dedicated filming space. You know, that's not entirely necessary. There are facilities within, you know, that are town-owned that they could reserve just like everybody else. So. I think partly, um, what the lawyer attorney that Angus met with. Said was that if you want to go to Verizon to start a negotiation, you need to have a document, an EFA line. And so I. I think they're, you know, being very generous with the, the plan so that they can document.
There's not an EFA that no money, don't puff up a document, just to.
Right. So it's a.
What about the forty-five grand capital? What's that for?
Um, that was the, it's described in this narrative. It's a, um, it's a folder, something to film sporting events. Uh, TriCaster. Yeah. So.
We'll be discussing this all at further point.
Yeah.
But ultimately, any, anything that is included here, if it. Is funded by Verizon, in part by Verizon, um, it's coming from customers.
Right. So I mean, to me, a valuable thing to do would be to somehow get the input of the customers that are providing money to the PEG fund and say, what do you want out of their cable?
Yeah.
You know, right now, we're just going with the vision of what a few people that have been involved in this one. So. I don't know how to do that, but I think that's a valuable step.
You don't want to talk to the lights like me, you don't have cable.
Same. Okay, that's adequate, right Angus?
Yeah.
So this will be a discussion for, for another time.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is, uh, request for input on a proposed, um, CR modification. Molly Coffins here, Chair of the Conservation Commission. Um, so in the packet Angus added the, um, just the CR with the comment, or are you going to pull it up?
No, no, I'm going to pull up her. I realize Ian's slides are not part of the package.
You're multi.
Ser- seritiously with no.
Sorry to call attention to it. So, um, I'll just summarize and then you can start to jump in. So the, um. The CR went through a couple of iterations and I don't know, the board kind of stayed out of it and let the conservation commission. But, um, it had to do with parking and, um, there was an interim design where they gave up, um. Where Greenbelt and the Concom gave up, um, CR protected land for parking, made it unrestricted. Um, and then the, the current iteration is. An additional amount of land that was under the CR that will be changed to parking. So I think there's been some discussion on Concom. If they want to change the parking, then they should give back the land that was already taken out of the CR. Is that?
Um, I, I don't know. I think we're kind of open to. Other solutions too. I. I, I think what I'm concerned about is. That kind of nipping more and more of the CR for sort of non-CR purposes, like what. What we were setting out to do is to preserve, um, farmland soils and wildlife habitat. Um. So, um, and. The priorities of the owners were to, uh, prevent cars from driving between the barn and the house in order to. Um, harvest Christmas trees. So. We were trying to accommodate that by giving them more land that was prime soils, as it turns out, um, for parking. And in doing so, we eliminated this one little, um, top piece of, it's about. Point three acres.
I think Angus is scrolling up to it.
Okay.
It is way down.
Yeah, it's definitely. Yeah. So that white hatched area, yeah. So originally, like the line went. From the white hatched area straight down to Ash.
Straight down, right?
So that triangle piece was originally CR land. Yeah, that was again, that was taken out of CR in order to.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm confused. Yeah, I, 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 I looked at, I mean, I, I read. The document and then I looked at the pictures. And then I started scratching my head and I figured I'd get clarified, did not, so.
Yeah. So the, the CR, I think all of this is based on a comment by the state that there's no parking in the CR and. But I, I don't think the state realized that the, I don't know, um, provision had already been made by removing land from the CR to provide parking.
Yeah.
And Vanessa didn't seem to push back on that at all. So I think some clarification from Greenbelt is also needed.
Right.
But originally, um, down at Ash Street, you see that point that runs parallel to Ash Street, that very.
Which point, there were, are you lined around?
The, the red triangle, the point of that.
Point of that.
From there up to the white, kind of along that break, that was originally all CR, that big triangle.
The, this year?
Yeah.
Okay. So that was a lot larger area.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think the solution we came up with was in, sort of an in-kind exchange, or that was the original solution. Um, which would have put the parking closer to, parallel to Ash Street. Um, but that wouldn't have allowed for a turnaround. So, um, so I think that the building inspector. Helped to come up with this plan in order to allow for turnarounds, um, in the parking lot. Um. Which, you know, which sacrificed some of the prime soils. So this picture doesn't show the overlay with the prime soils. Um, so that was, that was my concern to begin with. The white hatched area is not prime soils. So, um. So that's good.
Oh, that's not, okay.
Yeah. It's not prime soils, but I, I'm, I guess I'm just concerned that we have already. Conceded some prime soils for the original request to prevent cars from driving between the barn and the house. To make this other parking area.
So what, what is the route that the cars would travel now to, uh?
So there's now a road that's south of the house and barn that goes parallel to.
Include all the trees, right? Just as you go up on the right, you can turn right in.
Yeah, it's, it's in a tighter to the barn.
And, yeah, it's, it's pretty tight to the barn. Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want, there's someone who knows what, want to point? Because I'm, I'm not sure, like.
We don't do. Um. So. So yeah, I think that it's, it's something like this. A new road.
Yeah. And then the parking is kind of behind.
And then parking was, I guess, meant to be here.
That's, we get that on say, and actually Paul, you were part of that meeting.
Yeah, Paul, I'm confused now because I thought the white hatched area was worth, I, I'm completely confused.
That's what they're trying to, that's a new thing.
So they would like to add this for.
Oh, okay.
And this is part of the CR.
Okay.
Now, originally they added this part to the right-hand side of this red thing. Yeah, that was originally going to be CR and that.
This was part of the original, so the original line went something like this and then down this head row.
The original line for parking.
For, for the CR.
For the CR. Okay.
Went up like this and then across here. Which I thought made sense because that's historically where parking has always been for the tree operation. Um.
And the neglecting to address, there's a parcel down to the left too.
With access from Ash Street. Yeah.
Yeah. So I.
So I don't know if.
I'm not sure you need to. Cave on that instantly. I mean, they.
Would you say? Chris, I, I'm confused.
This is the, the.
So Astri, I just see a little tiny slice of Astri.
That blue line to Astri.
Yeah, e- e- exactly. So if, if, so. Higher on the picture or?
Yeah, so you left.
Higher off the picture, I should say, or lower off the picture.
Right, left.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a whole significant component. There's a little, uh, cut in the wall that goes through. They just put a septic system to the left of the house, but there's plenty of parking. In this field down to the left, if they decided that's what they wanted and that people would have to, you know, walk up the little hill to it. So. To sit there and say, we're going to give more parking. Out of the CR is. You, you're giving more than was originally intended once again, so.
Well, is this the exhibit that you were referring to showing the prime farmland?
Yeah.
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 So, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I also look at this and I wonder, and, and. You could argue this isn't our problem, but it is our problem if it, if it proves to be unsustainable. Um, at what point? At, at what walk lane and hill climb? Does it start to dissuade their customers? Um, and cause them to not be able to sell the product that makes their business sustainable. So I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Because they already have some parking up here.
Yeah. And. By the way, they do need more. My complaint was. The day after Thanksgiving, I came in from out of town through Ash Street. You couldn't get through because everybody was parked on Ash Street. Um, there was no police presence. It was a mess and people were.
Well, they were only on one side.
In Ash Street. I know, but everybody was walking literally. You had to stop and wait.
So they, they were able to walk up the hill.
Welcome to my neighborhood.
Yeah. Right.
Right, but they just.
But that shows that they're willing to park below.
And that's what I was going to get. Rick's point is he lives on Crane Neck and the same thing is Brackville. Now they've got signage and they have. Not a police presence, but people directing traffic, which is helpful.
Yeah.
But they, they walk a good half a mile, uh, there to get to where they have to get a tree. So it, it hasn't deterred them at all. Yeah, so, um. I would be concerned about giving up more of the CR.
And I, I don't, I think it, you know, it involves more monitoring too. You know, and I don't know if Greenbelt really wants to do, be on the monitoring game, but I, I don't know.
And this is just a between Thanksgiving. I mean, it's a very.
It's, it's, yeah.
It's like a three-day period. That's, that's really intense.
And this, is this a business that they are going to continue? I mean, they originally said they were phasing it out.
Well, I think they're not, I don't know if they're phasing it out or they're adding, they're diversifying.
Okay.
So I think that, um, from their farm land, the last version I saw. They're continuing with Christmas trees.
Okay.
Um, but it looks like there'll be less, less of the farm to be dedicated to Christmas trees. So I don't know.
Okay.
You know, but what pressures they're going to see. I think some of the comments from, um. The state where, you know, for some future purposes, would this be required? Would this be necessary to have more parking? Um. But. It's, you know, that's conjecture. I don't really know.
How are we a little part down the process to be having these discussions? That's my concern. I mean, they're already into the property. It should have been done.
Well, considering that we, like, less than a year ago, we had a lot of conversations about this. It just feels like we're rehashing something that.
I would have thought those sort of been locked in before they closed on the property and funds get exchanged. So. I, I just, to go back, like you said, picking pieces again is kind of bothersome to me.
Well, one question I have, which I think follows exactly on, on Chris's point is, uh. Yeah, we had gotten a, uh, email from Vanessa, uh, shortly before, uh, Christmas that, um, the state had signed off on the change. And I'm not aware, I don't believe anyone from the town was part of those discussions with the EDA. Is that, is that fair? So. Yeah, we're the, you, your commission is the co-owner of the CR. So why is it that Greenbelt is solely representing the holder of the CR and that. Concom wasn't afforded a seat at the table for those discussions with the state?
Yeah. Yeah, it would have been helpful for them to.
I mean, obviously we had a turnover with Conservation Agent. We had a certain, certain amount of time, but, but I feel the commission, you know. It, it feels like ought to have been part of those, any discussions or correspondence that took place. And I, I didn't get, I mean, I, I don't need to be, you know, I'm not the holder of the CR, but, but, but for what it's worth, I didn't, you know, it was kind of radio silence for months and months. And then a week before Christmas, we got Vanessa's email when, when they signed off. And I was like, oh, okay. And it was only later when I realized like they'd signed off that there were changes and that it was, you know, and then it's kind of ping pong back to your court after, like you said, less than a year ago, that we had multiple meetings. Daytime meetings, you know, I mean. A number of department heads, a lot of staff time went into this and, and it was, and, you know, Michelle was really deeply involved with, with brokering something that, that the town, uh, you know, could agree to.
Right. Which is why I didn't want to jump to a decision without getting my input. Yeah. Yeah.
So does this give you the input you need or do you have specific questions?
Um, I, yeah, I'm just, I'm not sure. I mean, what? I think one thing that bothered me about this CR from the beginning. Was that there's no public access. And I don't know if that could be a negotiation point, like, you know.
Mm-hmm.
While their cars are allowed to park on the CR, would there, you know, some public access so people could walk. On certain parts of the CR. I don't know. Yeah.
I didn't know that either. That's surprising.
Yeah, no, Michelle made that point very strongly when she was here, that, that unlike many CRs, uh, where there's public access, where there's not, you know, that the. The primary public purpose or value, conservation value of the CR is the prime agricultural land being, you know, preserved. And that's where this, you know, issue of parking and use of the land and, and making sure that in fact. The, the whole purpose of the CR and what justified the town putting a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars toward this. Because it's not public access. That's not part of the benefit the town will, will see from this. Is protection, I, ostensibly protection of prime farmland.
So is it possible to, to make an in-kind trade with giving back some of the parcel that they've, are, you know, that, that we conceded on? The same amount that they want to extend it to the non.
I don't, I don't know if it's too late to change the line or not.
Well, they're, they're trying to change that one. Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, I think, I don't know if that's going to be recorded on the map or if that's just going to be in the CR.
Yeah, they're not trying to change the CR line, right? They're trying to get permission to do temporary parking within the CR.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how it could be too late. I mean, you're asking for approval for one of those, the, uh, from one of the grantors. Um, so. You know, if, if, if it doesn't work for that grantor.
Granted.
For the grantee, okay, for the grantee, right. If it doesn't work for that grantee.
Yeah.
Then it doesn't work.
Right.
Now, the third component of this is the private owners, the conservation restriction and fishing wildlife. They have quite a part.
Right.
That's between the swamp and the parcel.
Right. There's public access to that.
Okay.
But not trails, I mean, but you're welcome to, yeah.
Yeah. There's no delineation when you're out there personally to see it.
There is, there are a lot of.
Well, they put up some signs during hunting season, but to, to sort that out in reality is kind of difficult.
So Ma, this is before your commission again Monday night, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Vanessa will be there.
Yeah. Is someone for the board able to be represented?
I was planning on going.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. And it's just, it's tricky.
Yeah.
Just because. You know, parking is restricted on other CRs. I mean, this is a different CR, you know, this is a different use, but. I just wanted to be consistent and I want to kind of understand why we didn't like parking on the CR to begin with. And, you know, if that has changed. I, I don't feel differently about parking on the CR, but, um. Yeah. And, you know, maybe there's some room for negotiation. They want to do something else. They want to give back some of the prime farmland. That would be great.
Mm-hmm.
But. I don't know if that's possible.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, your chair, Ma.
All right. Moving on to action items. Um, the first is a request for approval of the housing production plan. We have Ian Burns with the NUPC here. Hello, Ian. How are you?
Hi all. Good to be with you. Sorry, couldn't be there in person.
No problem.
Right. So Wendy, did you want him to run through the slides?
Um, well, we, we have seen these slides before, right?
They're, they're a little different, but they're similar to what was presented back in the summer.
Um, Chris and Rick, what's your preference? Do you feel like, can you? Run through this or do you have comments that we want to?
Well, I mean, this is partly for the public's benefit. I don't know who's watching, um.
Well, we did do this over the summer.
Yeah.
For the public as well.
Okay.
Um. How many slides are there?
It's only, he, he really, he did it very succinct, so.
All right. If, if neither of you have any objection, we'll just have him run through those.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any objection.
Okay, great. All right.
And Ian, just to be clear, I think you know this, but the, the only reason there's any discussion of that is just we have such a packed agenda. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I do not mind. I get it. I can be brief and I appreciate you all, um, taking this up tonight. Um, you, like, like you said, you had some of this presentation in August already, so I cut out all of the data pieces that you probably saw. Um, back in August, um, and just wanted to review the points as to why we're actually talking about the housing production plan. For the record and for the public that might be watching and unaware, my name is Ian Burns. I work with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. We are a public agency that supports the fifteen cities and towns of the Merrimack Valley region. We are a public agency that supports the fifteen cities and towns of the Merrimack Valley region, all the way from Lawrence to Newburyport, um, and the fifteen cities and towns in between. Over the past two years roughly, we've been helping every community in that region update their housing production plan. So West Newbury, along with fourteen other cities and towns in the region, have been doing the same process over the last two years. You can go to the next slide there, Angus. I don't know, on my end, I'm seeing just the regular window view and not the presentation view, but um.
Okay, now it's coming up on our screen as the presentation view.
Oh, funny.
Sometimes with the uh Zoom, sometimes it's uh, so yeah, it's, it's, we're on slide two.
All right, as long as you all can see it, I'm still on slide one here, but I can keep going.
Okay, well, I'll do, I'll just, I'll, I'll, let me get out of uh presentation mode. Um, and just do it uh as.
Yeah.
Second. All right, does that, does that come through?
Perfect.
Okay.
Um, so as a reminder why we're doing a housing production plan in the first place, uh, number one, we really see this as the town's opportunity to articulate its vision and goals for housing and its needs for housing over the next five years. Um, housing production plans are a five-year plan and are usually updated every five years. Not only are they meant for your community's vision and your goals for housing, but they're also a tool that is offered by the state to help plan um for affordable housing development. And it is also a way to allow the town more control over affordable housing development and forty Bs. For those of who are, are familiar with the forty B process, um, should you adopt a housing production plan? And I'll explain that in the next slide here. So many of you are probably aware already. Chapter forty B allows uh developers to go into communities that have less than ten percent of their housing stock designated as affordable. Developers can come in and build overriding local zoning if they have a certain amount of their construction affordable. Um, communities try to reach that ten percent threshold because once you reach that, you can deny a comprehensive permit for an affordable housing development. However, there are many communities like West Newbury that have their affordable housing stock below ten percent and likely won't be reaching that ten percent anytime soon. That's where a housing production plan comes into play. So if you adopt a housing production plan, which you're doing tonight, that housing production plan gets approved by the state. And then if you build uh a few affordable housing units every year, that number is outlined in the plan, you can get the plan certified, a lot of state terminology here. And once the plan is certified, you get protection from forty B developments for one to two years. So you're showing progress towards reaching that ten percent minimum, even before you've reached that ten percent, which is why you get the safe harbor. But the first step in getting there is producing a housing production plan. Because then, once you have it, it's approved, you can start building affordable units. Hopefully, if it becomes certified, you get protection from forty B developments. That's kind of the, the iterative process that has to happen. And so this is kind of the first step in reaching that. The community has to articulate its vision for housing and affordable housing needs. Are there questions about that piece of it before I move on? Because I know a lot of people are confused about the technicalities of that operation.
No, I think we're good.
Right. Um, so then, next piece, just to remind folks on the next slide, housing production plan process. Previous one expired in twenty twenty-three and we've been working over the past two years now to update it and hopefully get approval here tonight so we can submit the full plan to the state. Next slide there, Angus.
Can I just ask a quick question? If we, uh, since the last one expired in twenty twenty-three, um, if we approve this tonight, is it good through twenty twenty-two, through twenty twenty at the, through twenty twenty-eight or through twenty thirty? Do we get a full five years?
You get a full five years and it won't be from your approval tonight. It will be from when the state approves it, which could be a couple of months from now after we submit it to them for their review.
Great, thanks.
Yep. Um, so I'm not going through each of the chapters tonight because you already saw that presentation. But just a reminder that the housing production plan for the public to be aware, it really digs deep into housing needs uh from a data perspective, looks at what exists in towns uh demographically and also with your housing stock and predicts what might be needed in the future and creates recommendations based off of that housing needs assessment. You can go to the next slide, Angus.
Ian, if I could add just one, one nuance to this, because I think it's important in light of some of our uh correspondents over the last couple of months about demographic projections uh is the production requirements for a housing production plan are solely driven by the number of uh housing units existing in your community. They have nothing to do with demographic projections. So while it's, I, I appreciate the work your office has done and the back and forth to try to get those projections as uh, you know, realistic as, as uh, as we could with the data that is available. Uh, I just want everyone to understand, they actually have no bearing whatsoever on the production numbers. Those are one hundred percent dictated by uh mass uh regulations. And they're based on uh, you know, uh, one percent or point five percent of your year-round housing stock. So it's based on the number of housing units. So even if the projections were showing we didn't need any housing, it wouldn't change the production. And, and that's not what they'll say. We do need housing, but uh, I, I just think that while the projections are something people will look at and, and use as a reference point. And it's important that they're as good as can be. Whether they're, you know, this or that has no bearing whatsoever on the production numbers that were required to, to specify in the plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then these were the, the six strategies that came out of the plan. We mentioned we did this a little over five years ago. Last time around, the plan had probably about twenty strategies and goals outlined, which we felt was pretty unrealistic. So tried to do a bit more of a narrow focus this time around and pick five or six strategies that the town um could feasibly work towards over the next five years. Um, each of these strategies focus on some of the needs that were identified in that housing need assessment. Um, I won't go through each one in detail because I think you all already worked through that in your past presentation. But just to note that a lot of it focuses on, number one, ways to develop your affordable housing stock, whether that's through partnering with um an affordable housing trust or working with local nonprofit organizations. The second piece outside of uh looking at affordable housing is really diversifying the housing types across town. And by that, I mean allowing additional small units in town because we saw a need um for smaller housing units, things like one and two bedrooms, for folks to be able to downsize if they're ready to move out of their four-bedroom home or want to downsize or for a young couple that wants to get started in town. So looking at more than just large, single-family homes and looking at ways to increase the actual designated affordable units in the community. I'm happy to answer questions on any of those strategies that folks want, but I didn't feel it was necessary to go in detail on each of them since you saw that already.
Can I comment on them? Because they sort of, Angus just said, well, not to look at the projections, but that's what, because I mentioned it to him. Um, these pretty much all tie in with my concern on the plan. And originally, there was a projection that we're gonna lose thirty-five percent of our housing stock. That got corrected between now and twenty fifty.
Population, not housing.
Population. Between now and twenty fifty, it's projected a two percent increase, I believe, in there. But with these strategies, which are pretty much exactly what I'm saying, they're gonna be the drivers of our increase in population because the first one, um, uh, not, no, the second one, um, ADUs are becoming a big thing in town. I think, like you just said, there's already eight permitted ADUs. I personally am looking at one. It's a brilliant way. So that in and of itself is gonna increase population in West Newbury without any new building lots being built whatsoever. Um, to your, number one, municipally owned property. We're gonna be looking at the Mullen property and put affordable housing on there. Then you've got the MBTA housing. If that goes in, there's gonna be at least forty, probably a few more units on that. Uh, those are just units. There'll be hopefully more than one person in most of those units. Um, another strategy which I'm seeing a lot of builders in town are finding is that we have the right of uh, a two-family on a, on a lot currently. So we're seeing a lot of two families. So the whole projections, to say we're going up two percent by twenty fifty, I, I don't find that is reasonable because these strategies alone, they gotta push these numbers considerably higher. So, and I think the town's offered most of these strategies already.
Can I make a note about the projections? Um, you know, to that point, you're exactly right. If a lot of these strategies are employed, um, we could expect to see a greater population growth than that two percent that you're referencing. The population projections, um, those are done by the UMass Donohue Institute. They partner with the state to do population projections for every city in town across the Commonwealth. Um, and those are based off of primarily census data and based off of demographic trends everywhere from birth to death rates to in and out migration, meaning mostly domestic migration happening in and out of, uh, out of the town and in and out of the state. And so they look at those demographic shifts and project population. They do not take into account things like zoning changes that may increase housing production in a community. It's purely a demographic trends projection, looking at what happened the last ten, twenty years. If that trend continues demographically, here's what you look at over the next ten, twenty years, uh, thirty years even in the case of twenty fifty. So it does not take into account that potential housing production. And that's why we talk about um the potential need to create a, a growing community and to allow for growth because you don't want to just be stagnant. And so that's why these strategies are listed there. The, the projections are not a reflection of if all the strategies happened.
Yeah, one, one thing we've talked a little bit, just Ian and uh myself and the board at times is the distinction between uh projections and forecasts. A, a population forecast is a, a very different thing. That is much more, it's, it's all the stuff Ian mentioned of, you know, in migration, out migration, birth, death, so on and so forth. But, but then layered with qualitative, okay, what do we know is gonna happen? Or what are we reasonably, reasonably projected is gonna happen? And layering that more qualitative forecast, that's, that's something that's uh, you know, these projections are not that. This is really just the data.
Mike, I understand we have to, why we have to approve this plan. But I think we put these numbers out there and if the general public sees it, it paints a, um, not a genuine picture. And just to go back to Ian, the demographics, I think another thing that we're missing, currently, we have a population in West Newbury and a few other areas, we're aging in place in our houses. Because there are very few other opportunities available. But when we have these other opportunities, whether it becomes an affordable housing or the MBTA housing, uh, somebody who might be in a four-thousand-foot house, one or two people move to those, that house then becomes available for a family of four or five. So that's gonna increase population too. By twenty fifty, that will happen significantly.
You're exactly right. Yes.
So I, I also, uh, Ian wanted to comment on, you know, strategy five with the um, or six, I guess. The MBTA community's lot goes through, we add forty units, not all of those are affordable. So like our percentage of affordable units is gonna drop probably, right?
It, it could, however, the um, your total year-round housing stock, so the denominator, when you calculate that ten percent, um, is only updated after every ten-year census. So you won't actually see that change until after twenty thirty. So you have a buffer time to then produce affordable units and catch up to that point. So they won't change that and account for that increased housing stock until after twenty thirty.
Okay, and, and the ADUs that are going in, how are those, are those counted in that housing stock at all or?
That's a good question. Um, we are trying to get an answer to that. Another, another community asked. I don't believe at this time they're being counted there. Um, however, we, I don't have clarification yet from the state. Angus, I saw you, were you shaking your head?
Yeah, yeah, my, my, my information may be stale, but, but I may not be, I, I, I bet it's not. Um, this is, so basically, the only, there's really two mechanisms to get a unit added to your Subsless Housing and for forty. One is if it is built under forty B, the second is through the local initiative program. To get a unit added through the local initiative program, it's gotta meet certain requirements. It's gotta be a deed restriction of minimum amount of, you know, duration. It's gotta have, you know, the income requirements, they're gonna have all that. But here's, here's the thing. It's got to, the unit has to be subject to what's referred to as an affirmative fair marketing plan.
Angus, I'm sorry, I think, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the question was more if those ADUs get added to the total year-round housing stock to the fraction, not necessarily affordable.
It was, but I guess that plays on both sides of the ratio.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that's, okay, yeah, Ian, I, I missed that, yeah, because I don't know, I suspect they would be. They would be considered permanent year-round housing units. But in terms of adding those ADUs to the S H I, they would only be considered affordable, even if they were uh, sold or rented at affordable rates, if they had been marketed under a affirmative fair marketing plan, which if a lot of these units are gonna be rental, the owners of that principal unit are in all likelihood not going to do a lottery.
Also, they don't count towards the form.
So exactly.
No perception of whatsoever. My guess is that they, they in actuality help our housing issues. But in relative to uh how uh your um applicability of forty B and the ratio is concerned, they're gonna probably increase that denominator.
Yeah.
Make it even more difficult.
Yeah.
To, to, so, so it's somewhat ironic that they may effectively improve our, our relatively, you know, our reasonably priced housing um percentage, but they'll actually make us look worse as far as affordable housing. Right, that's right, yeah. So, you know, Dan, you do, Dan, you have a lot to say.
Right.
Lot to say.
Are there more slides there or is that?
Uh, no, that was just our questions and comments.
Okay, all right, any other questions or comments on the plan?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I make a motion that we approve the uh housing production plan.
Is that the right language, Angus?
Uh, at least so, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Do you want me to add anything?
No, just checking. All right, one second, that, any further discussion? All good. All right, hi. Okay.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
How we do?
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, where are we? Um, so was Dori gonna be here?
Uh, yeah, I told him it would be not before six thirty and not after seven. So, um, I, I haven't seen him yet.
I'm gonna do the Cotton Street caller.
Uh, Christina's gonna be here for that. I told her not before six forty.
Okay, right, we're ahead of schedule.
Wow, you're too efficient. We gotta be something, I don't know. Jeremy's the last one.
We do have five, you know, you're gonna work for the health care.
Yeah, I'm just afraid that's gonna be a lot of conversation in, um, than four minutes. Uh, so why don't we move ahead to, do we do the telecom or is that a longer conversation? Request to submit the grant application authority.
Oh, yeah, that would be, yeah, right, yes.
Which item are you on, William?
E, item E.
Yeah, so item E, this uh request of authorization to submit the Community Compact IT Grant Application. Uh, the deadline was today at noon, so we did go ahead and submit the application. Uh, we'd actually had this uh program on our radar uh since we got notice of it uh several months ago. But we didn't have, it's a maximum two hundred thousand um uh grant. Uh, there's no matching requirement, uh, so it's, you know, it's an attractive grant program. We've gotten a number of Community Compact Grants over the years. They're pretty easy to apply for, they're pretty easy to administer. It's, it's really a favorable program. Uh, but we hadn't had a project that we had, the town had, at the event, and working with uh uh Kentucky on the capital projects. It became clear as we developed a better understanding of the uh telecom uh intercoms and E nine-one-one compliance project. Uh, it became clear that might be an eligible project. It certainly seemed that it would be. So uh, we basically came to that realization last Friday, you know, six days ago. And, and so we said, you know what? We're gonna put in, uh, because we were already putting on, you know, putting together the warrant article request and the capital project request for the page telecom. Uh, so we, we put that same effort toward the grant application and we did submit that uh earlier today. Uh, and we applied for, there is no matching requirement, but it did say in the grant that if you offer a match, it will help. So I went ahead and offered, uh, I said, I sought grant funds for seventy-five percent of the cost, which is just under a hundred thousand, uh, saying we were seeking appropriation for twenty-five. Well, what I'd like to do is seek appropriation at town meeting to a full amount. If we get the grant, we would only use roughly a quarter of that. Uh, I think, uh, uh, and I did put in the narrative of the grant that while we've kind of offered a, a match, if the state would be inclined to fund the whole thing, we would thank, you know, we would be grateful for that and it would allow us to go forward more quickly. So I tried to like have it both ways.
Yeah.
Uh, but uh, that was the, really the one judgment call that, that I didn't have the opportunity to review and report. But I did think that since we had had this project on our capital plan for years and had been attending the proposed funding for the whole amount, it seemed like not a big stretch to say, you know, let's, let's uh, you know, contributing twenty-five percent if that gets, helps us get the grant, uh, seemed like a good decision, so.
Any questions or comments?
Um, no.
So we, we did receive from uh the prospective vendor that uh Kentucky had been working with uh updated quotes uh late yesterday. So we were able to update the proposal before we submitted it to reflect current quotes instead of the ones that you may have seen in the packet, which were from two thousand two, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three.
So what were, what's the amount they're not occurring?
The total amount was a thousand one twenty-seven.
That's less than what you had previously.
Correct, yeah, because what I had done is taken the ones from twenty. Correct, yeah, because what I had done is taken the ones from twenty twenty two, twenty three and and applied kind of arbitrary escalation clause and and once we got the quotes, it actually, the prices hadn't gone up too much from what had been poured previously.
I know there was concern, you said the board didn't approve when you pulled the grant back, but I I don't know if we have to approve it at this point, just in the gap.
Well, yeah, I think it's, yeah, yeah.
Approve and thank at the same time? I'll make a motion to approve the community grant submitted by Angus and thank him for doing it in the timely fashion.
Great, the only, you know, as with so many other state grant programs these days, it's got to go in through a portal, it's not, so you can't export it, so the narratives are substantially similar to what you see in the article request. And I do have like a Word version, but I I was not able to like export the grant, the same same thing we have with the HEP grant. So it's a little bit annoying. It doesn't doesn't facilitate sharing the content of grants. But one thing that was nice in the materials we got from Jonathan late yesterday was, there's a nice one page summary of the E nine one one regulations, and and that was something that I knew was going to be important to articulate with the local warrant article, so I was glad to get that, get a single page adequacy, so kind of what are these regs that we're not compliant to.
Thank you for being prompt, Chief.
You're welcome.
We actually were ready for you four minutes ago.
That's what Boyd helped tell me.
No, you're not like that.
We were uncharacteristically early.
So item before us is a request for our appointment of Stephen Savoy as full time police officer. And we have his chief's letter here about Stephen, do either of you have any questions for I see you, Stephen?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, I I actually had a question, Stephen, and by the way, thanks for, thanks for your interest. Chief, he will now need to go to the police academy, is that correct?
That's correct.
For, for how long is that?
He would be starting in June, he'd be out by November.
Okay, so so between now and June, he would be working with another officer?
No, he's going to be running around doing errands, like buying equipment for the academy, getting everything he needs, doing his physical and his psychological testing, everything that needs to be completed prior to his first day at the academy.
Okay, and and he will start the academy in June and be completed when?
In November.
Okay, so five months is not fine, or six months, five?
And that would be the soonest available academy we could get him to.
Yeah.
Yes, live here.
Okay, great. And let me, you're you're, you know, there was a little chronology of 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 the last fifteen years of your life or so in in the packet tonight. And, you know, I guess just look forward to a bunch of years of, you know, once you get settled here.
What I was excited about when we spoke for the first time, he started working for this company, and correct me if I'm wrong, and rose through the ranks and really had quite a bit of loyalty for this this company that he works for now. And this is just really the next step in his professional career that he wants to follow through some family that's also in law enforcement that's been encouraging him to come here, so I was very happy to hear that. And he has a little bit of experience with energy and sustainability.
We're dealing with it and work a little bit.
So you guys could talk about batteries.
Put up an EV car, you can fix it when it's broken down. Keep our public safety energy demands low.
But when we spoke, I did mention that, you know, it's important as somebody who has invested in this community, that that's what I'm looking for, that I want somebody who's going to be our future leader. I'm certainly not going to be around forever, and I want to make sure that the town has what they deserve, which is great people, great officers.
Yeah, first question would have been academy, second, background check, you done that?
Absolutely.
You came out clean?
Yeah.
Wow. Now, I assume you do that in everybody before you bring them?
Yes, to us.
Yeah, that's part of the initial process.
And you're satisfied?
Yes.
Okay, we do quite a lot of digging.
So then he will be on payroll full time, starting when?
Yeah, so we're going to have to, so in order for us to get him into the academy, he needs to have an offer letter signed and and provided to the academy that sort of gives them the timestamp to begin the application process, but he's going to have to give notice to his employer. So we're looking, I think we talked in the hallway, you know, probably the end of the month would be what we're looking at.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Okay.
We did the tour of the building and sort of gave him that little insert as to what this process is all about.
Yeah. Angus, any questions?
Uh, no, no, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
For your interest.
This is our town manager, by the way, I don't know.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to appoint Stephen Savoy as a full time police officer per the chief's request.
It just would be a term through June thirtieth, just so you know, the chief probably told you this, but it's an annual reappointment process and it's really kind of a formality each year, but but that's how it's, I think that goes to state law, it's it's just how it's always been done, so. So, but the term would be through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five, and then every June, the board is asked to revoke the slate for the subsequent year.
Is there a second? Okay. Just have one question for like town employees, there's a three month probationary period, when you hire somebody that's going to the academy, does that start after the academy, or how does that work?
Yeah, so part of the offer letter is going to state all the things that he has to successfully complete, hopefully can work that out with.
I was just curious.
So, well, I can, I I haven't asked, I haven't ever looked into that with police specifically, but it has come up with other hires over the years and with this, but the town council has said two things, he said that ninety days of the personnel policy is ninety days, you can't, you cannot at the point of hire, you know, have it six months or whatever, so it's ninety days from the point of hire. But he's also said, and this will sound bad, so don't, but he he said it's an employment at will state. So anywhere in the Commonwealth, public or private, an employer can sever an informed relationship without cost. Now, it's different when you get into the union, non-union, I'm generalizing, but this was years ago on a different. But so what Tim basically said was the ninety days, you can't extend that at the time of hire, but he said if you have a situation with an employee after ninety days, as the employer, you 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 have the right to, you know, separate service.
Okay, I was just.
I know that sounds harsh. That's the answer to your question.
Yeah, okay. All right, Paul Faver?
Hi.
Welcome, Stephen. You're a long career here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. Thank you, such a good.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, nice to meet you too, Chief Maxwell.
Ian, I know, I swatted the last.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. Wait, you guys realize you're on like at eight fifty, right?
It is what it is.
Okay. Yeah, we have so much stuff on the agenda, we carefully like orchestrated the times and everything, so. All right, so we're on to item C, review of the Coffin Street culvert hydrologist unit. Are we waiting for Butch as well, or?
I think he's going to be tied up out in the field, Christine's been working closely with Tim, and actually Paul's been quite closely involved with this one as well.
Yep. Christine?
Hello.
So this is a request to, oh, you're looking for direction for the pending filing, right? So do you want to kind of give a recap to what you're looking for?
Sure, Angus, did you want to start, or you want me to?
I, well, so there's there's two culverts, the board had previously voted in January to authorize me to sign the notice of intent to file with CONCOM. One of the two culverts is, you know, pretty straightforward in terms of sizing and so forth. The other one, there's some what I think have emerged as kind of policy questions in terms of size and degree of compliance or non-compliance with stream crossing standards. And and in a nutshell, Christine will go into more detail, but but in this location, there's, it's not going to be feasible, it looks like, to meet the stream crossing standards. And under, we've been working closely with Clay, and it's to the maximum extent practicable, and so you know, he feels with the due diligence that's that's gone on, that's not going to, he doesn't think be a hang up with CONCOM and DEP. The issue is there's some trade offs between type of construction, capacity, but also cost, and that's a big one, because the cost estimates that Christine had put together for the warrant article are based on the estimates that Lloyd Sperges had prepared as part of their scope. And she'll go into detail on this, but long story short, one of the two culverts, that cost, you know, we we stand behind. The other one is what it will cost based on the design that you've seen. If it goes in a different direction, it could be done at a fraction of that cost through primarily in-house labor. So Christine, I'll go into details, but there's some decisions that need to be made, and as the highway commissioners, I wanted to make sure that this board is fully apprised, so that before I sign that application, and it goes with the CONCOM, goes to the CONCOM that you know, you know, I I didn't feel that that me or or staff should be making that decision, because, you know, you could see it either way, and we want to know how you see it, so.
Yeah, so which one is the one that, so it's going to stay as a box culvert and the other one is going to pipes, or is that what you meant, Angus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Angus, do you have, oh, good.
I'm just wondering which one is going to remain the box culvert that we already talked about, is it thirty seven, or?
Um, yes, that would remain as the box culvert. It is the one near seventy three, and Angus will be pulling up that plus the, if you have the plan, Angus, I think it was also in the, yeah.
This is the one, yeah.
Was that the one from, yeah, so what's in the packet is, I think what they're showing is either a three by three box culvert.
Yeah, that's what they're showing.
Yep, and with this version, it was also proposed to have a natural bottom, so it would actually have the box culvert and the box bottom, but then there would be a natural kind of substrate to help meet the stream crossing standards. So the reason this is important, and we're taking our time with this, and we wanted to bring it to you, is that you know, the town will be having more and more culverts that need upgrades in the future. And it will come with a cost and with effort and and permitting and whatnot. So we want to make sure that we kind of get this filing, we want to get it right, I mean, as right as you ever can, but kind of set the tone for where we want to go in the future, so as Angus talked about, of course, we want to meet, you know, regulations where we can. Then there's costs and other offsets, so when I say where we can, the stream crossing standards, and this is more Clay's area of expertise, but I believe they were codified in the Wetlands Protection Act Regulations a few years ago, so if you are building a new crossing, a brand new crossing, then you are required to meet the stream crossing standards. If you are replacing one, you have to meet to the maximum extent practicable. So we, the maximum extent practicable is always this kind of nebulous, you know, standard of, well, what do we really have to do? And, you know, so we're trying to understand from Clay what the commission might be looking for, what DEP might be looking for. And we think for the one up at, up near thirty three Coffin, that that one really is a good candidate to meet the standards as best possible. The one here, it has smaller flows, it does not have apparently quite the ecological value that the other one would have. And the other big thing is it does have downstream culverts at a private residence. So whenever you upgrade a culvert, you always want to check what the downstream impacts are going to be, because you don't want to flood anybody out. So we did our due diligence, and we have Williams and Sbrages doing the the plans and the survey and all that for for the culvert, but we brought GEI on, the ones who had worked with our with our MVP grant, because they had done some initial modeling of all the culverts on Coffin Street, so we said, hey, can you kind of tweak your model a little bit and include a little bit extra watershed and see what happens to these downstream culverts? So we had additional money in the in the budget, and they've been working with us. So this has been iterations between Williams and Sbrages, the staff, GEI. And there are some constraints on both of these, there is a water line, you can see it on the plan there, an existing water line, and actually staff went out, Paul and and Butch and and their crew went out to actually find the water line in the field, because the culvert, both of the existing culverts go over this water line, so you're constrained how how deep you can go. Or, and you know, do you want to relocate the water line or not? So on the other one, because we're meeting the stream crossing standards and it's bigger flows, we do have to relocate the water line to go under. And it's also an asbestos pipe, so it's an old pipe. We're going to put in a ductile iron pipe. This one, it's a cast iron pipe, I believe, and again, it would be very expensive to relocate it, it didn't make sense with the flows, the downstream impacts. So Williams and Sbrages, they try, we've we've all tried to meet the standards, but it got to the point where we couldn't have the box culvert too big, because you don't want to flood out too much downstream, and then we had the wa- the water line constriction. And so they actually had to move the pipe, remove the culvert, the box culvert up and get rid of the natural bottom. When that happened, we all said, wait a minute, wait a minute, and then they they ran costs for us. And so so the option would have been a three by two smooth concrete box or pipes. You know, and right now, what's there is a fifteen inch corrugated metal pipe that has that has failed. So we had a discussion in house, like what is it worth to meet these standards? Do do we need to meet these standards? Williams and Sbrages did a cost with a twenty five percent contingency, this is, this is conservative, but they came up around two hundred thousand dollars for that culvert. We talked to Butch and said, well, what if we just put in a pipe, like a twenty four inch pipe? So that, and and it's a plastic HDPE pipe, it's high density polyethylene pipe, you may have seen it, it's smooth on the inside, but corrugated on the outside, and so crews can just pick it up and put it where it needs to go. These are very strong and they're used everywhere pretty much. Butch said, well, let me let me cost it out, so he did did some costing today, and he said his crew could do it in-house for under forty thousand dollars. So we're looking at, you know, thirty to forty thousand versus potentially two hundred thousand if you have to send it out. If you did this larger culvert, you would probably do wetland replication area, et cetera, so. Our argument is that we're we're not really, we can't meet the stream crossing standards anyway, and so why don't we not go with the very expensive option, but perhaps, you know, keep that money in mind for future culvert projects? But still, you know, slightly increase the pipe, and I'll have a new system, so it won't, it won't fail. But then the the question is, well, that that came up, well, will it will it carry the hundred year storm? And and that's kind of, you have to understand, like, carrying the hundred year storm depends how you look at it, like, will it carry the hundred year storm in free flow? Or will the road not over top in the hundred year storm? In this case, we also had to look downstream, so there's a private residence with a driveway, and I believe Paul and Clay spoke with them, it's got two culverts. Yeah, those right there. It's got two, I think, twenty four inch culverts. And with with a good amount of capacity, but we didn't want to increase the flow substantially. A little bit of impact isn't isn't bad, but with GEIs analysis, so they were able to look at how high the water would go in different scenarios. And just the last couple of days, we we figured out that a twenty four inch pipe would work quite well, we, you could have the hundred year storm not over top on Coffin Street. And then also minimal kind of impacts to these culverts downstream in terms of elevation and also in terms of increased flows. So that's what we're looking at, I know. That's what we're looking at, I know there's a lot there, there's a lot of technical stuff, but I, you know, I'm happy to take questions or. Or.
Sorry, I'm just wondering what the existing pipe, how big is the existing?
Oh, the existing pipe is a, it's a fifteen inch. Arched pipe, arched corrugated pipe, that's what they called it, but. Um, it's kind of squashed, I think, so they actually modeled it as a twelve inch pipe, but. Um, yeah, it's not very big. Essentially from like twelve to twenty four inch pipe.
Okay. And did they look at if you just replaced it in kind? Um, whether that would work or is it still, is it undersized to begin with?
Uh, it is undersized to begin with, which, uh, when they ran the numbers for, I think it was the fifty year. Yes, so they ran for existing and the fifty year and the hundred year, it did over top the road, which is what. Uh, was witnessed by some residents there, um, with some of those large storms, so that that tells me their modeling is. Is kind of on par there, um. So, so you know, the. The whole point of upgrading these culverts, at least this one. Well, both of them is that they were undersized, um, because you want to. Make sure you can handle some of these larger flows in the future. So, but with the constraints downstream and the costs, it didn't make sense to go with the full box culvert. Um, because with the full box culvert, you have to order it in pieces. So it's these large pieces and then special equipment has to bring it in. And then you can see here, like, the limits of excavation go far, far out, um. You know, and then you have to bid it out at. Um. Excuse me, at, uh, whatever the word I'm looking for, at the proper, proper way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so that's where we are and and I think, you know, we've talked with Clay and. He said, you don't. Have to meet the standards, you know, DEP. Likely won't come back and say, oh, you have to do this. As long as you can justify kind of your reasoning and why it is not. Practicable and it, you know. Um. Kind of when Butch said, yeah, we can do it in house for this much, we all kind of said. Wow, you know, that that's, that's a big difference, of course, we're still gonna go through the permitting, we got the survey. You know, which is more than maybe was done in the past, so we're following all the. Proper wetlands regulations. But, um.
So, so even if if you. If we went with the the highest cost option, we still would not. Meet the wetlands crossing, this, the the street crossing. Uh, requirement. Because it would be perched on the. Um. Is that it would be perched down on one end?
Yeah, I don't think it would actually be perched, but it would have, you don't, you wouldn't have a natural bottom. Um. You'd, because of the water line, you just can't get.
Separation.
Right, so, so, so if you, if if money was not an object at all. You could, you could replace the water line, put the water line deeper and then. But.
Then you're looking.
But then you're dealing with the downstream effects.
That's, that is also the big.
Yeah, we we had a virtual meeting, uh, was sent today or yesterday with with, uh, Rick.
I think that was yesterday, I'm a blur, yeah.
Yesterday, so, uh. And and he was, he was asking us straight out, like, are you worried about litigation if you? Rich shot Williams at Williams. Yeah, so so that has, that's a serious consideration.
Yeah.
Uh.
But this to me sounds really simple, I'm not sure what. The debate is, you're gonna improve what's already there that's collapsed in on itself. You're gonna save a bunch of money. The process is gonna be even. It's gonna be efficient and probably not flood out, I don't see where there's any.
I, that is staff recommendation, but but I do know there could be. Second guessing when it goes to Concom, when when I briefed the C I C a week ago tonight on this, you know, even though. You know, you could just tell, like, well, what what do you mean, it's, you know, so, so I want to make sure if that conversation happens at the permitting stage. It doesn't come back to this board and you say, well, wait a second, who made the decision to not? You make the decision.
This seems like it's pretty straightforward.
I think at a staff level and and I mean Christine, I think has done a, actually a masterful job, like encapsulating. There have been a lot of meetings, Paul's been extremely helpful, Butch, Clay, the four of them, it's it's. It's been a very iterative process with the designer, with with multiple engineers, it's so she's like. Encapsulated what has been a lot of discussion and analysis. Because the starting point was, you know, we want to meet the stream crossing standards and it was only kind of going through all that, that that became. Clear that really was not going to be profitable.
So this is maybe the model for other culverts in town, let me get to that place.
Yes, I I was kind of curious about that too, because.
Well, I think one of the nice things about this project where there's two, at least in my opinion, where there's two that are in close proximity and would be done, you know. In in direct succession. Uh, is you're kind of showing one that would be meeting, one that wouldn't. And and it's really the circumstances of of the specifics of the locations.
So so the model is actually just showing the complexity and the decision to get to the right solution.
Yeah.
That was the point of saying it was somewhat of a model for the future.
Yeah, like if it is practical, you know, we we can expect it's gonna. But the other point that that Clay made and Christine kind of alluded to this, but. It gets a little out of my expertise and I don't know, Paul, uh, you might want to chip in, but one thing Clay has said is from his standpoint. There's not the same ecological value of meeting the standards in this location as there is on the other one where it's like a running. Why, it's like a running stream, the other one, whereas this one is really dry.
It's not perennial stream.
Yeah, so he said, like, he didn't really see that meeting the stream crossing standards in this particular location really was. Worth much on an ecological, but is that fair?
Uh, yeah, and just the the breakup of habitat between the downstream side, because you have to go through the. One residence yard lawn, and then you have to go underneath a couple of wood bridges and you have to go underneath someone's driveway, so there's really no connectivity. Um, it's kind of a dead spot in between downstream side.
Yeah, from a habitat standpoint, yeah.
Wait, actually, that that's a really important point, too, is that. Even if you did meet the stream crossing standards here. You'd have another constriction just down, down the stream, not far away, so it.
Right.
No.
Of the, uh, of the the culvert downstream, yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, so on the, uh.
So the one hundred forty two inches as the, uh. That is the, um, inlet.
Yeah, okay, so the outlet was perched there.
And then, uh, yeah. This one here kind of gives you a good aerial view of. Kind of the relationship between the street culvert and the driveway culvert.
Yeah, 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 that was a good picture, that was interesting.
So that's why I was confused, so that's thirty seven?
No, this is, it's a little confusing because the G E I refers to a sixty five coffin. But but the Williams Spar just refers to a seventy three coffin.
Oh, alright, okay.
And then we. I forgot to mention, but we, next time G E I does an updated report, we really should have them say seventy three, yeah.
It's sixty five, yeah.
Drive record is a sixty five.
Yeah, okay.
The residence lawn is at sixty seven. But the next house off with the east end is going to be on seventy three.
Alright, so this is not thirty seven?
No.
Yeah.
Thirty seven is the one we're putting the box.
Correct.
Got it, alright. Alright.
I make, I make a motion that we, um, uh. Uh, approve using the twenty four inch. Um, high density polyethylene culprit. Um. For the crossing at. Um, seventy three Coffin Street. Very good.
Um, so do we, we don't need to authorize you to?
No, you've already done that, but this will give me much more confidence and I believe Christine, the filing deadline is Monday.
Yeah.
So, uh, and and, uh, Williams and Spar just is is. Remented, we're working to meet that deadline, so we'll have this ready to file.
Okay.
Uh, because obviously, you know, getting permitted, so we can put it up to bid, you know, we're we're trying to push the timeline.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, love.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Hey, can you see solar panels on the roof out, uh, your window?
No, because I'm in phone.
Oh, no, no, I know you can't right now, but but I don't know what they've done this week, I don't know what was.
Well, feel free to stop by and we can, I've got.
Take a look out the window.
Yeah, sure, sure, I'll be there tomorrow, alright.
Alright, so you said Sam's coming to stop then?
Uh. Yeah, he's gonna zoom in, yeah.
Uh, should we go ahead to the minutes?
Actually, can I ask a quick question and I should have asked this while we're still on that topic, but I'll, but I'll mention it anyway. Um, so. Three years ago, four years ago, there was a culvert on, uh, Georgetown Road that. Failed basically, it collapsed, um, you know, so it ended up with a, a, uh. Uh, sinkhole on the road, um, uh, that was while Wayne was here and and. As sort of an emergency, um, they replaced culvert with light kind. They just put in another round culvert, both ends are perched. Um, I think that's Be- Beaver Brook at that point. Um, if not, actually Be- Beaver Brook is, it's a tributary to Beaver Brook, um. And I'm just wondering if we know that there aren't further. That that is a classic case that should have been. Um, a, uh, you know, a, uh, box culvert, um, you know, for the, to meet. Stream cro- or road crossing standards. Um, and, um, and, you know, for. Good reason, it, you know, was not done that way because otherwise Georgetown Road would have been closed for months, um. So I I guess I'm, the, you know, the 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 question is, do we know that there aren't similar circumstances? On similar. Uh. Perennial streams in town.
I think Paul, you're much.
Uh, yes, talking to Butch the other day, we did talk about probably four or five culverts. That. Would definitely need to meet the stream crossing standards. Um, so that was why I thought was if we could maybe back off on the minor ones, because if we went to stream crossing standards and. All blown out on this one, it would really have kind of a ground seepage nomination, it was probably just the wetlands when they cut the road there through a small pipe in and overturn. Channelization. So. That was my thought was if we went for a stream process down to that one. And that was low priority and every other one in town that we have to replace.
Yeah.
Is high priority, we can't say no to these, a better one.
Well, it makes sense, so so for me, the question really comes down to at this point. Those other, those other crossings that have been identified. Is it worth verifying that we don't have an imminent failure? Um, and so that was the, the one that, the culvert that was replaced was a, was a steel culvert and it corroded and failed. Um, and, you know, failed at the midpoint pretty much, and so the road. Was collapsing, um, and it would be, it seems to me it would make sense to make sure we don't have anything similar. On any of the other identified, um, stream crossings.
Yeah, no, we can, uh, Butch and I discussed three or four the other day with the locations, where and then. The ass significant perennial stream, some water supply streams, tributaries to the.
Right, yeah, because it would just, it would be, it would be kind of tragic if if we had another one collapse like that, if we had another failure. And we had to do an emergency replacement and it wasn't up to standard.
Well, I think in that case, we would do an emergency replacement and then do the proper design permitting to put.
Yeah.
A stream crossing standard, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one thing we're trying to do, and Rick, you know this as a member of the capital improvement committee, is we're trying to build out the capital program. To project these, and so that's great, Paul, to know that there's, that you know, like, there are four or five, but that's something we'll want to. Get that migrated, even if it's like. Ten years out or ten plus years out just to have it in the capital program, so these things ideally don't, don't creep up on us, yeah.
Alright.
Thanks.
Sam's here. Hi, Sam. He was here.
Hello, yep, still here.
Alright, we're ready for you.
Alright.
Introduce the. The rate changes.
Absolutely. Yep, yep, uh, so. Based on the, uh, select boards and finance committees, uh, recommendation to review fees. Uh, in the department, I did so. And noticed a a couple of things that needed corrections, one was some notations. That were put in with my predecessor on a square footage calculation. That are seriously outdated. Uh, so I just deleted all of that, the state building code allows for us to set a value. Uh, based on any reasonable, uh, presumption of the work. Uh, so having that in there served really no purpose. And then I noticed, uh, stuff like the minimum, uh, reinspection fees were different for each inspector, which they should be. Pretty consistent, our values pretty consistent across the board. That just eliminates confusion on reinspection. Plumbing fees were slightly low, no, they hadn't been updated in a little over a decade. Um. But yeah, other than that, there, I don't think there was really a heck of a lot, it was more of a cleanup. Uh, for the most part, and then a slight increase in the plumbing fees on a per fixture rate. Uh, I think we went from seven dollars to eight dollars per fixture. Which if you're doing a bathroom remodel, you know, with a tub, sink and a toilet would equal an extra three dollars on the permit. Um, again, just being. Ten years later, the prices of things have gone up, including our our staff and operational costs, so. Uh, that slight increase, you know, will will cover those those increases we, from, you know, a a ten year. Uh, gap in changing these fees.
Uh, I have a question, um, Sam, I haven't ever applied for building permit, so the twelve dollars per thousand, is that? Thousand square feet or a thousand dollars, or how is that based?
Uh, per thousand dollars, and the only reason that went up is the company that we get our, uh. Permitting software from, we don't pay them upfront, they're paid on a per permit basis. They went from ten dollars per permit to twelve dollars per permit. Uh, so all that does is increase the, um. Or I'm sorry, the, so the twelve per thousand stays the same. The change was the tw- plus twelve dollars and it went from ten dollars to twelve. Uh, so that additional two dollars covers our costs. For, uh, supporting our permitting software.
Yeah, so that, that's, uh, just so you guys know, the, uh. That's one of the kind of receipts reserved for appropriation lines where the money comes in from the applicant. Yes, so when every month, when when we put through the invoice for paying the. Uh, permanent vendor, it's coming right from monies that the applicants paid, it's not ever going through the tax budget or anything like that, so it's important that the. Be the applicants are paying, fully offsets what we're having to pay, uh, permanently.
Any questions or? I'll answer.
Sam, what is the effective date of that increase on the permit length fee, is it July first?
Yeah, um, it it's already in effect, uh, I just, you know, we're behind, they. Unfortunately, when they introduced the fee, it was right after budgets were approved. Uh, they thought they were being good and and, you know, sending it out. I think it was like April or May of last year. Um, so, you you know, it it, we we did lose a little bit in that case. Um, I mean, certainly the the department paid for itself with the projects coming in and the fees coming in. But, you know, we certainly don't want to, uh, continue to take a two dollar hit per permit. Moving forward, so I just proposed it as of seven one. This coming, uh, you know, twenty twenty five.
Um, I, I, um. I I I think it's all great, I I have no questions about this, but I just wanted to note that, um, a year or two ago, uh. I approached Sam with a question and we talked at some length about it. Of the idea of, um. Trying to incentivize, uh. More energy efficient construction by. Having some accommodation in the permit fee schedule, and I'm not suggesting that that should in any way stop what we're talking about tonight. But I just wanted to sort of. You know, wave the flag regarding that, um, in general, so that, um, you know, so that. You know, the other board members knew that conversation had taken place and maybe it's something at some point. That that would be worth considering.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
My question on that, Sam, Sam knows I'm looking at an A D U.
Yes.
I will call it a handicap, the hers regulations, which are energy incentivizing. Are extremely expensive. And you have to comply already, so I don't know what the incentive on a permit would be, you've got to come. Get a pilot.
Well, if. For instance, you might structure the permit fee so that somebody is, um. Instead of putting in a, a, uh, you know, a a gas burner or an oil burner. Who looks more favorably at a heat pump.
Which, but the hers pretty well pushes you in that way.
Right, there are, yeah, there are, and and may, and maybe, you know, maybe based on, um. The current stretch code, maybe it becomes. Uh, a moot point. That's why I think, but I'm not sure that's the case yet. So anyway, I don't want to beat it, I don't want to waste a lot of time because I know we have a lot going on here.
Yeah.
But I was just, I wanted to make the point that, that it's something that might be worth.
I think you might be there, you could discuss it.
Yeah.
But I think it's sort of forced you to become energy efficient, whether you want to or not.
Right.
Right.
And within the next week or so, just touching based on Chris's ADU and others' ADUs, it does look like the loosening up of the DWR HERS rating will drop by 10 points. And the whole reason for that is it's just tougher to get a compliant rating on a smaller unit because of the window to wall ratio. So they are trying to work with the new ADU regs and make it a little bit more user friendly in that way, so.
Right. I appreciate hearing that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's a good move on their part.
Yeah, we do it like we come, we talked about, yeah.
All right. Okay, so I'd make the motion that we approve the revision to the residential building permit fee structure as proposed by Sam and Sean and Josh. Patrick.
Yep. Just, just a note on that, it's not just the residential, it's all permit fees.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at the word residential.
Nope, I saw that and I just wanted to make sure.
Fee schedule as presented. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
All right.
Sam, before you jump off, and we've got Jim on, I just want to make sure that, you know, when these get put out for the web, one thing we find sometimes is there's vestiges of old regs that like are on this or that or whatever subpage. So just work with Jim and Max to make sure once you do put these up as the official new fees, then you work with the town clerk's office to make sure that it's, you know, we remove all old fee structures because we found out with like special event permit apps or different things where like we'll think we have purged the whole one and then this, it's like in some subpage somewhere. So just make sure we'll stick with that, that there's no, no confusion.
And I will say, I just want one more comment before I step off. I just gotta say, Angus, I'm very impressed with your 7 o'clock guesstimate based on the extent of the agenda. Really impressive.
Just, that was Rebecca and myself.
Oh, okay, all right, never mind. All right, have a good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick.
Sorry to out you, Angus.
Good job, Angus.
All right. So I would propose instead of moving on to item F, that we discuss the Board of Health, even though it's not A15, we don't have anybody else waiting to appear, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, Linda, I don't know if Linda is for a particular, but I think that's great. I don't want to keep, but I don't know if she's here for.
I don't know.
So, but yeah, that's good.
All right, so any idea what page that's on, because I didn't have to jump there.
This is page 134.
All right. So we have here a memo from the Board of Health and some some estimates of what impact this would have on West Newbury. Rick, I know you went to the presentation that Mike Hugo gave at the Board of Health meeting. So, you know, we have Tom and Paul here. Are there any questions you want to ask or do you want to just discuss what's in our packet? How do you want to move forward? Is anything you see here change your original opinion about this?
Well, I, yeah, now that it's outlined as it is, I, you know, I see more benefit to the town than previously, before it was kind of nebulous and, you know, the board appears to be have gone through this and, and, you know, picked out specific, some specific topics where an advantage, would be an advantage to the town. You know, I do still have a couple of questions, but, you know, I, I feel personally more favorable towards it now than based on what we knew earlier, what I knew earlier. And, and, and it wasn't Mike Hugo's, so.
I would seriously be concerned about you.
I think several people would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Can we start with, let Paul just give us a quick overview because he grabbed me in the hallway a while ago. And said, part of the problem is they threw you a pile of paper. I had no idea what they're looking to accomplish. If you think it's beneficial, and I think we need to start with a basic presentation. If that'd be helpful for you, it would help me.
Okay.
So last November, the state finally got the governor signed into the new safe law, safe 2.0 law. Basically, it's trying to break, you know, all boys out, you know, in the same playing fields, make them have all credentials and education wise, both myself, the Board of Health, the support staff. And typically with new laws, the mandate in the state, they don't fund it. But this particular new law, they're funding it, it's $200 million put towards public health disparities across the state. So this is kind of different than what typically would happen to the state providing regulations and requirements for towns, so they don't back it up. So this is a backing up of the new law. I did talk to Wendy a lot about this and at that point, I did tell her there was some benefits to West Newbury. The benefits would probably be more than I expected. And I agree with you, Rick, as going through this and asking more questions, I do definitely agree there's a lot more benefits than I originally thought myself three months ago. So there is, you know, I did talk to I N Out about the reimbursement process. I knew that might have been some concerns in the past. So there should not be any money exchanged through West Newbury. There's a little bit of weight to the sheer service of the group. If there's any trainings, they would set up the trainings for us and then they will register us and pay for the trainings. If there was any trainings that I took on my own or paid for my own license renewals and CEUs and all that, I would pay that myself and then they would reimburse me then. So there should be no need for the town to need to be reimbursed for anything through this group. So I did I N Out this week. So I think that was a benefit because there was some concern that whether, you know, to have staff time, you know, go around and submit paperwork and email to chase, you know, spend an hour's worth of time to get $40 back for reimbursement, it really wasn't practical. But when I did talk to the sheer service coordinator last week, email in person, to clarify that, I was at half the trainings and certifications, they would pay directly and then, you know, then the other stuff that I would, like right now, when I pay for my licenses, I get reimbursed by the town, but instead I would send an email to the group and they would reimburse me directly. So we know, I don't foresee, I'm not saying there will never be any money passing through the town, but I don't perceive the need for any money to pass through the town of that nature for reimbursement.
Yeah, so I kind of wondered as I read, and I don't mean to, I know you asked Paul to speak, but just that, you know, regarding money spent.
Yeah.
It struck me that there is a likelihood that there's sort of some redundancy in, in in either services or materials that the Board of Health may currently pay for, that this would potentially instead pay for in the future. And I'm not sure if that's right or not, but that's what it struck me as I read it. Because I read pretty much the whole thing today. It was great. And, and, and it, you know, it made me wonder, is, you know, does it actually allow the town to save some amount? Probably not a huge amount. It isn't like it's going to save us the cost of a trash contract. But, but, you know, even a few thousand dollars a year would not be a bad thing. So I was just curious on your perspective.
Yes, that is true.
And if there are any particular examples to that.
Like my, all my, my British sanitaryian license and my health officer's license, all that is now the town reimbursed to me and then this group will reimburse me for that. So right there, I think last year for licenses and, you know, education, I think we spent, I was in the document, I think $1,500. So right there is the $1,000, $1,500 savings right off the top. It's not, it's going to be, just, it could be all over the place because some of the trainings are $300 training, but you have to do it every five years. So you're not going to see, you know, a flat rate of $1,000 or $1,500 every year, but it will be some savings. I mean, no pressure about it. And I think the biggest thing is that being involved in the sheer service agreement is that the sheer service coordinator is going to be the liaison between the state and what the state requirements are in the law and then what the Board of Health needs to do. So they're going to keep us on track to make sure we meet the deliverables, make sure we're on target and they're going to do, they're going to be in the middle. Because as you know, anytime the state comes up with a law, it's not black and white. It's this, so it's, and then it, so this group would be, you know, negotiating with the state to figure out what we need to do and if we're not meeting that, what can they do? Because they have to, they're getting audited, so they're going to have to make sure that they're doing their job to make sure that we do our job to make sure the state's happy. So I think that's the biggest benefit. And there's other, there's other hidden benefits in there, but I think those are the two biggest ones is that, you know, having the sheer service coordinator, perhaps someone to reach out to, to help organize the trainings and set us up for success as well as a financial gain on it too.
Yeah, I, I'm still not convinced. There's a quote in here that says, "While some cities and towns have well-funded professionally staff, local public health departments," which is us. You know, "Others are staffed solely by volunteers with a single part-time staff member and that's dangerous for public health." I mean, I get that, but I feel like we are fully staffed, you know, you're very professional. And so the other communities in this group are not at the same level as we are in terms of staffing and have different needs. I mean, we have two restaurants, we don't have, you know, businesses. So I feel like this program is really designed for those other communities and I feel like our needs are going to be outweighed by what their needs are. It's a simple majority vote and if they're all cities and towns voting for something they think is a worthwhile thing to pursue, you know, our, you know, specific West Newbury needs.
I mean, that's my yes to no to that. But there is, you know, West Newbury, the same needs are in all the communities, whether it's hoarding, whether it's opioid addiction, it's the same needs, but just in smarter, smaller doses. So there is still a need for everything else that the larger city needs, but just in smaller doses. And again, like I said, there is one-on-one vote, but again, it's a collaborative. And the only big city is Ames, but all the other towns are Roqueland, Merrimack, Rowley, Newbury and Georgetown. So.
Right, but they have a lot of businesses which we don't have, which need inspections and all.
Well, they do, but that, well, the inspection portion of thing. But regards to the credentialing and, you know, all the other stuff, that's, we're all 100% in the same playing field. But you're right, regards to inspection requirement, so we can, so I see it as no cost to the community. We will benefit financially as well as training and everything else. But there's going to be a lot of hidden, the hidden things that we're going to benefit from that we really don't know because this is just, the law lasts no benefit. So by the time that things get flushed out, we're probably going to see a substantial benefit from that. And if there's no cost to it, then it makes sense to, you know, join the group. There is some benefit right now, we can clearly see there will be some benefit. And if there's no cost to the town, it's still a benefit.
Well, let's get to the cost benefit.
Let me start with a simple question. Amesbury got a grant for this. Well, no, so the grant, the grant, the application was filed by the old fire chief. And he thought he was applying for a, a different grant. Because that, during COVID, when this grant, your application went up. So Amesbury got the grant, but we all signed on for that grant. So when Amesbury submitted the application, all the towns signed on as members for that grant. Wasn't just Amesbury going for the grant alone, we all signed on just during COVID when this grant application originally came out. And it's been this long to get, you know, the application and get everything under control. So Amesbury is just the lead municipality of this sheer service agreement. They're not running the show. The show is run by the, the service coordinator, sheer service coordinator.
That would be through Amesbury, isn't it?
Yeah, it says right in the thing.
Correct, but Amesbury decided one vote. So Amesbury said, even though it's not the lead municipality, they only have one vote. So if six other communities want to do something different, then Amesbury's out. There's seven, right now, there's six communities plus West Newbury. So the seven communities.
But they're responsible for the day-to-day management of that employee. So what, we don't have any control, what if there's some kind of lawsuit? I mean, what is our legal exposure?
Well, the way I read it today, because like Rick, I read it again today, they're an employee of Amesbury, so everything, their insurance, their retirement, everything is employee of Amesbury. So there's no impact to, for my understanding, to West Newbury. And I believe K and P has also reviewed this because they're the attorney for Newbury and Georgetown and I think Amesbury as well. They have already reviewed this. So Amesbury is the lead municipality. They, them and the sheer service coordinator, which is a third party, being, being in these strategies, they're the ones that are going to have to manage this individual, these individuals that we hire. But it's the group, the seven communities, the six communities, they're going to vote, whether we review someone's app resume to see if we hire them or not. So it's not just strictly on Amesbury. Their, their house in Amesbury because they need a space to work and put a phone and put their, put their seat. But again, they're a regional, you know, seven town, they're, they're resource for West Newbury and all the other communities. We don't need to use them. I mean, if we want them, we can use that service. So there is, you know, a lot of different, you know, parts of this, you know, sheer service agreement. So we can use all the parts or we can just use some of the tools in the toolbox. We don't have to use everything. So, I mean, it's all, every community is going to use different things. So if there's 10 tools in the toolbox, we may use five. In another community, you may use three, but different tools than we use. So it's not like we have, we're, it's not like we're using the same tools. I mean, we could. And there is benefits, like you said, there is, I mean, if you look at the list, there is some different equipment tools, light meters, sound meters, ear quality tests. So if there is something that we needed to test, I could pick up the phone and next thing you know, I have a piece of equipment to do some type of testing we need to do. Otherwise, we'd have to rent it, buy it, we would never even deal with it.
Can we get back to the economics though? Because that's what's concerned me because it's a 25-year agreement with a three-year funding plan on the front end. What was the original grant? How much did it get funded for?
So the original grant was $300,000. And then we had all the communities had to do a survey. We had to submit documents, you know, inspection reports and, you know, complaints and everything. And then based on the data that everyone submitted, the region got another $150,000. So this past year was a $450,000 grant. And every year is going to change, but that's the three-year commitment original grant.
We don't know if it's getting funded after three years.
Yeah.
Correct, but so if it doesn't get funded, then the whole thing, that's right in the IMA, the whole thing goes away.
Well, no, it doesn't. It's got to be, it's a 25-year agreement unless the Board of Health and the Select Board.
No, if you read that, if you read that, if there's no funding, it stops.
Yeah, it says, yeah, shall expire when the funds for the grant program are no longer available or when terminated in the courts for the agreement, but no longer.
Yeah, it's also, it also says that if the funding body, being, you know, our legislative body, our town meeting does not fund, you know, if there, if it would cost the town to move forward, and I would have to dig to find that in here, but the way I read, interpreted was that if town meeting doesn't fund it.
Doesn't fund what?
Doesn't fund our share to participate after it's no longer a, a full grant. If it doesn't in fact require funding from the town, then we're out.
Yeah, right, so that's another way, right, correct.
I mean, you want to confirm that.
Yeah, one of the questions, I have a follow-up on that, it's on, say, 6F, it's page 150 in the packet. But in this language, each municipality will, will request from the appropriate, let's say, body appropriation for any services, costs, expenses associated with the culprit not covered by the grant. That was one of the questions I had is, you know, how does that work in, in practice? Because, you know, typically it's kind of commonly understood that the only entities with an absolute right to put warrant articles on the warrant is the Select Board or the Planning Board with a zoning article. So does this, you know, but this reads to suggest like, are you compelled to bring a funding article to town meeting? Even if, you know, so that, I mean, I had a number of questions. And I know, you know, KP signed off, they've been saying that, you know, but, but, you know, we haven't gone through our questions with KP. And maybe they have good answers to all these, but, you know, I heard Paul say a few minutes ago that retirement or I'm assuming. retirement or I'm assuming things like OPEV contributions or, you know, if there was things like some kind of wrongful termination suit or whatever, when I hearing you said, Paul, is that, that would be Ainsbury's issue. I would wanna, you know, confirm those things, just in the interest of, um, making sure we're not taking on the liability that, uh. I mean, this is, this was nothing like that, but we had a instance a couple of years ago with, uh, uh, you know, one of our intermunicipal agreements where we had agreed to a multi-year contribution, the terms were all set out, it was very you know, this is the dollar amount we had agreed to, and, you know, the city wanted to offer wage increases above what they had expected because of union bargaining. And, and so that became a question to us, if even though the agreement was signed and everyone agreed, uh, you know, they came to us afterwards saying, oh, we wanna increase our wage, and, and ultimately this board held its ground and said, no, we agreed to this amount. And if the city wants to offer more, you can do that, but our, so you know, this is different, because there's not an over financial contribution, but that's, you know, one of the, one of the questions, um, that we could talk to about a little bit.
So do you know what compensation this third party gets, or are you referring to the, the primary person?
Um, so this four hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, off the top, Ainsbury gets fifteen percent, that's right in the IMA for, you know, no housing in being the leader municipality, and then they put out the request for proposal for a third-party vendor, and then B and B strategies was chosen, so I'm not sure what their contract is, the uh, shared service coordinator, uh, B and B strategy, I'm not sure what their contribution is or what they're getting paid, but yes, so there is that some of that money is going to pay that third, that private vendor to support, you know, this regional shared service agreement.
Yeah, which is, I would like to see like a business plan of how money's gonna be spent, I, I'm just really concerned that West Newbury's needs aren't gonna be fully respected by this, um.
So, um, as a board member, um, I appreciate your critique of this, because as somebody that's trying to represent the health of the town, as a board health member, um, I think that um, this collaboration that he's gonna be able to, that Paul's gonna be able to represent the town, um, and also be able to complement his current practice, which I think is good. Um, and I definitely think that there is a, a difference between the public health needs of the different communities around here and that West Newbury is different. Um, I believe Paul does a, a very good job, he's very informed. Um, but I think that, um, being part of this, um, this group allows Paul, um, to complement these other communities as they will help to complement him as far as his practice of public health and bringing that to the board. So, um, I'm not ignorant to all the things that you all have to consider, um, as far as financial liability and all that. But I do think that our participation in this is gonna be better for Paul's practice and Paul's skillset in what we can actually, um, provide for the town. So as a board member, um, I think if, if we're doing, then I think it's gonna be beneficial. If we don't, I think we're still gonna do the best we can, but I'm concerned about, um, state mandates and reporting and the burden that that would put on, um, the Board of Health to be able to maintain those. We would probably have to come up with our own goals, um, and although Paul has been still involved with this, um, with this group and then attending their meetings, so that he's up to date on what's going on and getting the information like reenver, reimbursement and such. Um, so that he had more information on that. I don't think Paul will remain in the silo or anything as far as, because he knows a lot of people and he knows that public health is something that, um, you know, we all have to complement each other on, because eventually, like COVID, COVID being something that I'll have to deal with. So, um, just wanted to give you my endorsement, and it's the board's endorsement. Um, and like I said to Paul, there's a reason why these IMAs have to be part of the executive board's approval and the Board of Health's approval, because we need to complement each other with what we think is important and what we think is journey, so I just hope to say that.
Uh, one question, I just, uh, really administrative question, not really a policy or subsequent one, but uh, on the meetings, I know the advisory board has to compile the open meeting log, do you know where they posted, they just posted Ainsbury?
I'm not sure, I just sent an email invite, I say accept and.
Okay, because that's one thing, you know, for instance, like with Whittier, that's something we've had to really and prevail upon, Whittier, that we're, we're a member of that, like, we want them posting their meetings here. Because this came up, you know, with that building project, yeah, totally different thing, but, but, you know, the superintendent was, oh, we post our, where do you post them? Oh, we post them on our website, it's like, well. And we're, we're part of, I think, uh, the board had a discussion, what, three or four months ago with, uh, Chief Dwyer, we, he was seeking approval to enter a new intermunicipal, or it wasn't intermunicipal, but it was a
Namuck?
Yeah, yeah, it was a regional entity, and it was great, the board endorsed it and so forth, but in the course of that, there were some questions of how many such agreements are we part of, and we're part of a lot, like, a lot. And so that's something that this, just so you know, this isn't like just under the microscope, it's, there's a bigger conversation.
Yeah, we can, I can find it, that's not.
And, and, well, and that's not my, my, the reason I bring that up is just so you all understand, this isn't, it's not like being singled out, like, the board is, is actively trying to get its head around what are all of the agreements we're party to, what do they say, what are the terms? And things like, you know, transparency or meeting postings, I mean, it would be great if the answer, and if it's not this, if they could agree that they ought to be sending agendas to all of the participating communities, to the town clerks, to then post them boy, or just like we post all agendas, because that's just, it's just one of these little things that just helps make that connection real. And, uh, and helps give that if this board or my office or anyone else wants to like go sit in, we can do that and not hear about it later and have, you know, it's like, sure, we could call Ainsbury and say, oh, when you meet, but we shouldn't have to do that, the public shouldn't have to do that, it should be posted in a way that's.
Yeah, I mean, that might be something that, that occurred to me, so I was reading, it's the same thing, we're posting, how, what is the notification of meetings? Because there's, there was no clear statement on how they notify of meetings, and I mean, that might be something worth asking in Ainsbury, and it seems like it would be a very reasonable part of, of, of their, um, you know, of their documentation, that they specifically say that, that, you know, they, they post notifications or make notifications to all participating communities.
Yeah, I know, when, when we talked about this, you know, a year or more ago, um, you know, this, um, the exhibit A, the grants agreement, I, I just remember like, I had to ask the city times over the course of months to get simple information, and they did eventually provide it, but it wasn't readily available, and that's, was it, that was the grants agreement, there's a direct exhibit to this, I said, oh, exhibit A, can you send it to me, it was like, it took a while to get that, so.
It's just all new, I mean.
I know, I understand, but.
Pick up the pieces.
Yeah, but, but I mean, that's a, I think that's a fair.
Yeah, um, to answer your question, Angus, page, page two of the IMA, vote four, that's where it talks about Ainsbury retaining the liability and all that. As she has services coordinator.
Yeah, no, I mean, I've read, I've read it all, uh, but, you know, things like OPEV, I mean, we, we have our actuary, is, is that like, are they part of like in the long-term retirement, OPEV, all of that, is that, is the city of Ainsbury absorbing those costs?
Uh, far as I read, number four, yes, but again, I think if you guys have any specific questions, I would encourage you to reach out to you know, KP, just to, you know, answer the specific questions, so hopefully we can, uh, move forward.
Yeah, is that, do you have any dialogue with the, with, with Ainsbury about it? I mean, is it, are those the kind of things that?
I mean, I, I think it'd be best for, you know, you know, Angus or Yassal, as being a select board member, has questions about, you know, K and P and certain questions, then definitely reach out to K and P or write, or, or provide the list of questions, and I can get sent it to Ainsbury, and they can follow up to their K and P representative, but I know, I'm not sure who, um, obviously, there's a lot of people at K and P, but I know that um, the town's representative, uh, K and P has talked to the K and P attorney for the region, for the group.
Does Ainsbury have somebody on board now, because I thought it said, reading this, uh, actually, it wasn't quite, it was this January or last January, there was a discussion of having somebody on board, and.
The, the position is posted on Indeed right now.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I actually, this is one of my questions, I, I was trying to Google the company that Mike works for, and it's like, no hits. The only hit was the inspector that being.
Well, Mike works for the M H A V.
Right, but the, there's no presence on the web about that, so is that, was that created just because of this funding becoming available, his group?
No, his group's been out there, just thirty years.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing on the internet for.
For M H A V.
Yeah, for the acronym of, of the company he's with.
Oh, no, there is. I, I think the, I, I.
Marimack, Marimack Valley Public Health. No, Ma, Mike works for Mass Hospitalization and Health Boards.
And so what, what is he getting out of this? I mean, is that a fair question, because he's really selling it hard, you know, are they getting something?
So he has not, M H A V is, you know, a group that supports boards of health. It's an organization, N H O A, Mass House Office Association, that's another group that supports health agents and directors. So there's two different public health groups, M H A V, that's, you know, and then there's M H O A.
And how, how are they funded? Are they privately funded or from like tax dollars?
I, I, I asked, I asked him that question because, um, I most certainly want to know where he's coming from. Um, and he kind of swirled around answering that question, but he said that, um, they get grant money, um, from the state. Um, and, um, and it's, um, I think that part of that grant money is probably, um, is lobbying, I mean, he, that, that organization is a lobbying group of public health boards, through the state, uh, in their standalone, and they can lobby. But I think with this new implementation of these regional groups, um, I think he was, he's being paid, having from grant money. He didn't say this to me, but this is where I got it from, because I was trying to get a sense of where he was coming from, because I found him not helpful at all, I was hopeful that I'd get information from him, but I just thought.
He was, he was, he, he was a very good salesman, and, and he was, uh, um, a purveyor of, um, of questionable information in some cases.
Yeah, and, and I, and I think that he, that he did not compliment us, uh, conversation or, or your information on this at all. But I do think that, uh, that.
This, this is the website right there, that N H P, that, that, yeah, it's, it's not a doc, it's not a document.
So, so the N V, the N V P H A is, that's, they, they hired, the group hired a vendor to come in to do website followers. And that's where we, they chose, the group chose names, that's how the Merrimack Valley Public Health Alliance came up.
And, but they, they haven't formed yet, there, I mean, there's nothing online about it yet.
I mean, that's was only two months ago that we created this, this alliance group, but that's different than Mike.
Okay.
So this group, the N V P H A, is the regional group right here that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Uh, Mike's involvement is not there, because.
His grant funding is probably based on the number of numbers he gets.
Exactly, I, I definitely think that's, because this is what the state wants, and so they have to have agents out there soliciting, uh, the full nation.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't, I don't know how effective we can be in the way that we generate some stuff.
All right, so, um, it's, so I, I just had one thought that I wanted, one sort of observation, um, and you know, it seems to me as though this would, uh, improve, um, collaboration and communication between our Board of Health and and other local boards of health, and, and I'm sure that some of that happens already, but um, you know, if we were to think about, um, infectious disease, um, you know, which can happen, um, would, would there be a benefit, would, would we learn more quickly of incidents in other communities, and would there be a benefit to that? And that was really, it kind of, to me, that was the main thought as I went through this today, you know, where would, where would the functional benefits be? And that seemed to me to potentially be one, I can't verify that that would be, and, and, you know, we might never have another infectious disease.
Really?
But that seems unlikely, um, so.
So, um, it's, it sounds like there's still, I, I don't think we're ready to vote, because there are questions about the term and everything, so is there anything else we want to discuss now, or where do we want to go from here?
Seems like a good thought, I mean, you know, Paul's, right, like, if we have questions, let's ask counsel, when, when, when we talked about this a year or so ago, the decision was to not go down that road, and at that point, as you know, in FY twenty-four, we were juggling a lot of legal issues and we were three or four months into the fiscal year, it was already clear we were really gonna need to manage our legal budget to keep it within budget. We did keep it within budget, but the reason is because we didn't
Right, jump on.
Jump on every last thing, we had some very, very, you know, major things going on, as you know, so uh, I think, uh, you know, I, I'm happy to write up the questions I have, I have, I have a whole, uh, you know, over on this. Uh, if you guys do that, if, when, if you wanna just set a date by which we all compile our questions, we can get it to KP, and and maybe there's, there's, you know, that a lot of the questions go away, uh, now, and then, and then bring it back, uh, once that's played out.
Okay, so the, the West Newbury benefit from the Public Health Alliance, who generated that, the numbers of sixty?
Oh, that was the shared, uh, service coordinator.
So, so that person has been hired?
The shared, the shared service coordinator, yes, B and B strategies, yes.
Okay.
Is that Mike's role?
No, Mike is, Mike is basically not a given, this.
So, so they're advertising for a, a public health inspector.
Right, so that's different, so, yeah, so the Public Health Alliance, Ainsbury's lead municipality, B and B strategies is the shared service coordinator. So then the whole group, six, seven towns, just came up with a plan, where do they want, where do we wanna spend the money? So there is a plan out there, where do we wanna spend the money, we need, the group decided collectively that we, they, we needed a public health nurse. And we needed an inspector, so the, the draw was postings go for inspector and for public health nurse. So it's been hoped and out, yeah, out there, and there've been reviewing applicants and resumes, and um, they did vote the other day to hire an inspector, and now they're gonna negotiate salary and all that. Um, so that's different than, Mike was just a lobbyist to try to get to this point, so he's probably not gonna be in town like ever again.
Right.
Unless someone from his town invites him, because he's three hours away. Um, so again, totally such.
Yeah, so my, my, I guess my concern is, you know, the average annual value for West Newbury, almost seventy thousand dollars, I mean.
Well, you saw in the report that we said it was.
I know, but, but if we're gonna have trust in this organization to run this.
But, but again, if you look at the value, some of it was for training, you know, they added ten thousand dollars for training, there's a hoarding training coming up, so that three or four thousand dollars for the hoarding training was part of that sixty-eight thousand dollars. So it was out there, like I said in the letter, a little bit higher than I would admit to.
So thirty-six thousand dollars for inspection support, I mean, what, what's our annual inspection budget?
I mean, I think that was just what they came up for a plan, but I would say no town's gonna benefit that much.
Okay.
So again, that was the, I asked him for a breakdown, that's what the coordinator gave me, and, but I do agree, like he's, I said, I'm looking at probably, right, you know, fifteen hundred dollars for your savings plus training and, you know, everything else that Tom had mentioned, but again, it's not gonna uh, be there in seventy, sixty-eight thousand.
I didn't view this as a, uh, anything that was gonna be hugely complimentary, as far as buying resources, so, um, I did not view it that way. I viewed it basically, um, on the, um, on the different standards of public health, in that, um, and how we could complement that.
More of a softer value than.
Yeah, I did not think of this as financial, because I think we're doing a good job now, and, but I think that, um, there are definitely holes in it, and I think the regulations from the state may impose more credentialing that Paul doesn't currently have right now, that we have to be aware of, so, that's how I viewed it, I didn't view it as we're gonna save lots of money, because that's a very difficult argument to make.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, so we'll put together our questions and I guess get back to you once that's, so do you have questions that you wanna write down, or how much, how much time do you need to pull together any questions you have on that agreement, or we're heading into a busy season, yeah, I know.
My budget's to a week for tonight.
So. So was there a point where we were couldn't no longer join?
Um, no, I think the last agreement, I think the last round, this was the current IMA, but I believe after um, two weeks ago, when we said that we were, you know, my thing, what happened was, when, oh, Ainsbury was the last board to sign on, and at that point, I took it back to KP, which I can be, talk to KP, KP added another paragraph to the IMA that says West Newbury, I believe, could join at any time, and the, the other towns would accept us.
Okay, all right, so it's not an urgent.
I mean, I wouldn't drag it on, you know, keep on kicking the can down the road, because then I'm gonna have to play, if we do get involved, then I'll be playing. If we do get involved, then I'll be playing catch-up more than.
But you've been going to meetings anyway.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's just a Zoom meeting, so it's not like I, you know, you know, spend hours, you know, um.
Okay. So it, I mean, I I wouldn't think that we would come to any resolution before the end of this fiscal year, just with the town meeting and, you know, all the budget stuff. So, and that might be a logical point if we were to decide to change at the beginning of fiscal year, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, this is a board's position, and you guys, like you said, you guys have the right to ask questions, weigh in on, you guys gotta sign on or two, so whatever you guys do is, it is what it is.
All right, so I I'll keep it on the agenda, but it it's going to be after town meeting. Or or at least after the, you know, lead up to town meeting of the budget and all of that stuff, before we, I think, circle back. Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for listening. Thank you both.
So with that, we uh review of potential warrant articles. Um, so I just want to remind us that we're not discussing these in depth. We're either, you know, in or out, or maybe let's just go through it. If there are any that you have questions on, that you need additional information, or you think should be taken out, let's let's talk about.
We looking at just these five here?
No, those are just ones that.
Those are, those are ones where we thought there might be people from the public attending.
Okay.
So we wanted, and and it doesn't seem to be, but.
So I'm going from the the summary list that Angus had on the front of it, and I just highlighted ones that I either want to talk about, or or you have the same thing on that.
Well, he's got the matrix.
Yes, it should line up, they should line up, exactly.
So does that sound like a reasonable way to do it, just highlight ones that we have questions on, or?
Yeah, it's going to be difficult, so cut me off at any time.
Let's say again, it's not whether we want to support this, it's whether it should be on the warrant, or if there's information you would like Angus and his staff to obtain, so that.
I didn't even know how to approach this when I looked at it today, so I'm just saying, you can cut me off at any time, and we'll get there, right?
All right. All right, I I will start with instructions to the water board, if you want to have anything this year, or?
I don't have a rabbit hole already.
All right.
So my question on that would be, in twenty twenty three, we gave them instructions, but they don't ever get completed.
They're working on it.
See, you don't want me here for the rest.
I want to, I want to see their budget to see if they put the type in, so.
No, I, yeah, my my instruction is to be get it done, okay? So, yeah, no, no new instructions out there.
All right, well, you don't have to decide that tonight, but that's just one thing that I wanted to point out that. And it's not only us, I mean.
I know, it's anybody, anybody can stand up at town meeting.
Well, one thing, I I don't want to go down the rabbit hole, but I think this is an an interesting point. Uh, so this has appeared on every town meeting warrant for a time immemorial, uh, as far as I know. And uh, it was, it was only, there was only actually a motion under that article, you know, in in the last few years. And that was, I think, two different times. This, I believe, and I don't know if it went back before McCarron's time, that it always appears as a warrant article. But certainly, when I was start, when I started here, McCarron told me this on every spring, there's never been a motion, but it's always going to appear on the warrant. I read the legislation, the nineteen thirty six act, a little bit differently than McCarron. Uh, and you and I, I think, talked about this a little bit, like, he's taking the language totally literally and putting the exact verbatim, uh, scatator language to see if the town will, what uh, what instructions, whatever, whatever. I read that language as empowering that, for instance, let's say the town wanted to adopt a water bylaw that had much more, you know, similar to how really I think every other town I've ever heard has like a bylaw that lays out how rates are set, you know, all kinds of things. That would be binding on the Water Commission because of the language in that nineteen thirty six act. So whereas McCarron wrote, read it very literally to see what instruction, I read it as like, it, what it means to me is that if the town adopts instructions or a bylaw or whatever, that is binding on the Water Commission. So I don't.
Interesting, yeah.
Right, I mean, it, I was, and my first couple of years, I didn't think much of it, but the more I thought about it, so that's kind of like we don't, like, anyway.
All right.
They're subject to the the town meeting's votes.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that's almost too closely obvious, that 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 if if there's, if under that article, if there are instructions, any, and instructions is a broad category.
Yeah.
And and it's approved by town meeting, then the Board of Water Commissioners has to adhere to it.
But remember, this was adopted in nineteen thirty six, it was brand new. And I think it was just a way for the legislation to say, look, what, you know, notwithstanding, you're an independent, you know, financially independent, whatever entity.
But you're running by the rules of town.
Subject to the same rules, same bylaws that apply to the town as a whole.
Hmm.
That's how I read that language.
Okay. All right, for now, we'll.
So.
It's it's more just a curiosity.
Yeah, I know it is, yeah.
I think it makes sense to, I mean, all right, so I I guess I'm not sure, does it take away from that that? Or are you suggesting that it not be?
No, I mean, I would, I would say, you know, we'll just keep doing what we do. But I don't think that we need to, that it needs to be like, that the warrant article needs to be those, that exact language.
I guess it is.
In every spread, what I read it as, you know, the town could propose a water bylaw. Obviously, you'd like to have a water bylaw come from the Water Department and come to the Water Commission. Like, as you'll see with a couple of these later, in terms of transfer from water retained earnings or contribution of water retained earnings into the their pension liability, those are things I wrote, those are going to come from them. I'm going to look for them to embrace those.
Yeah, but that's not how it.
No, it's not how it should be, but it, but, you know, I think the same could be done if this board felt that a water bylaw would be really helpful to bring some clarity to some of these issues, like how rates are set.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of having to do it with instructions, that you have to have a public hearing, like, you could have a bylaw that sets all that. And and I do think it would be ideal if you have a Water Department and a Water Board that was sharing those objectives and bringing forward those initiatives, but if they're not, you know, if the town, on its own initiative, adopted a water bylaw, that would be binding on the Water Department and the Water Board, so.
Well, maybe we should head for that next year.
I think it's a good discussion in the context of, like, the comprehensive plan, form of government, and just trying to get, you know, clear on on some of the stuff that's, so.
All right.
It is kind of interesting, I mean, for the, you know, for the first twenty five years that I was in this town, it was um the instructions to the Board of Water Commissioners was a town meeting punchline. And and still isn't, so that one meeting, we're getting along with the email, we're like, right, and and then. Terribly worth a request, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so, but yeah, town meeting adopts instructions, rules or regulations, those are binding on the Water Commission.
Before we start on the whole list, can I make two overarching comments? One is it's way too long, sixty articles, so I never envisioned a hit to that. Number two, a lot of these articles, I'm going to go, just as an example, eighteen, which is the culverts. They have contingencies there of twenty five percent. Same with buying tractors, we've got hard quotes for these things with contingencies. What happens is, if the town funds this, they come in under the number by the twenty five percent, this all rolls to free cash.
Right.
In essence, what we're doing by overfunding these is funding free cash.
Mm-hmm.
I think we've got to trim these contingencies down. Don't forget, the water main came in well undone, the bridge came well undone. These tractor things, you got hard quotes, number one. I don't know why I need a contingency, because if they want to float the price up between now and we buy, you say, bye-bye, we're going elsewhere.
Right.
Um, so I think we ought to be looking at that a lot harder on a lot of these things, unless the intention is to pluck up free cash.
No, no, that's not the intent. I I think, I agree, if if we have a quote that is binding through April twenty eighth, I totally agree with that. One of the reasons we're pushing so hard on the Coffin Street culverts is to get that out to bid. If we are able to get that out to bid with a due date of April, you know, twenty fifth, we could come into the floor of town meeting and come in with with a true number. That's the goal, but we don't know if we're going to hit that, um.
But even on contingencies, and this is just me thinking it up. Suppose we we tighten up and say, take a five percent contingency.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully you come in, but if it goes over and needed a few other dollars, can they go to a thin con and get?
Yeah, there's other, yeah, I mean, if if it's a smaller.
I just think we're funding it way too uh, much on the front side, and it's forcing free cash up, maybe unnecessarily, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Just an overall thought.
Yeah, one one of the things Angus and I were talking about is potentially having the capital articles as one article, like we do with the budget.
He showed me that today.
Yeah.
And after he revived me, he talked about it.
What, you think that's a bad idea?
Um, it's concerning, because.
Why?
You're putting all the meat into one article, and you're, the last, I said to Angus, the last time meeting concerned me also, because there was not a single note, no way, or entire one.
Right, so if it's going to be like that, just just having all of them, they can still call hold.
I know, but I I don't, I think it may cause people to be less engaged in the conversation.
There's plenty to talk about on here, it sounds capital.
But to go and spend a million or however many, this is a lot, this is more than a million, yeah. To go and spend that kind of money without a lot of conversation. I understand that we've been, we're going to be playing with this for months.
Yeah.
And we get it, but I think the taxpayers should be looking, I wish they were more engaged, that that was the issue that bothered me.
Right, so I don't know that having one article with, you know, multiple things is going to have any less engagement than just doing them serially, like.
It makes it faster, I'll agree, I just, it concerns.
I think we should, I think we should just keep considering it.
We can consider, but I.
Yeah.
I I, I I, I don't know, I don't personally think it's a great idea, if if you consider every, for every capital.
Well, they are all, anyway, we we can take that, it's a formatting issue, really, uh, but but the way a lot of towns do it, including in this immediate region, including towns like Merrimack and Newbury, they present, this is their capital budget.
Number one, okay.
Everything, yeah, everything's enumerated, the amount, the funding source, it's all there. And but it's procedurally, instead of, I think, was it last cycle, with something like nineteen capital articles.
Right, and they.
Think of how much time that takes on the floor of town meeting, how much time it takes, you know, just in the next several months. All the separate, you know, so I I, to me, it's kind of a formatting issue, because the voter is getting the same transparency, the project, the amount, the funding source, um.
And they can discuss it if they want, I think.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it could actually result in a much more cohesive presentation, where I think some voters, especially people who are not engaged year-round, come to town meeting, and and it feels random, it feels chaotic, and it's not, as you all know, because you hear every, every week. Um, I think having like, this is the capital budget with the bottom one, I think could actually like bring some order and give people some more clarity that this isn't like random projects, you know, this is like this year's capital budget.
It's no different than the line item budget at that point, in that.
Correct.
Concept, and that that frightens me, that we, they go through, you build, you build, you know, tens of millions of dollars on a school budget, there's, there's no compensation.
Yeah.
I don't know how we get them more engaged, but I I just feel it's awkward, awkward, whatever.
All right, on the recurring articles, any questions on those, one through thirteen? Um, I I noticed the transfer of affordable housing trust funds, I put seventy three, and Jenny's updated number seventy six thousand.
I thought that was off, based on the number ten percent.
Yeah, that, I just put it in before Jenny had updated the numbers, so.
Oh, I was off, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so so that should be seventy six?
Yeah, so it's consistent with the, yeah, prior article.
Okay, good.
And then you already updated the paid funds, right?
Yeah, I did.
All right, anything else on recurring articles you want to talk about?
I'll probably down, we're going sixteen.
One through thirteen, okay. Nothing, all right, what about fund transfers?
Yeah, sixteen. We were going to have somebody at the state level doing analysis.
Now, I mean, we can ask them, but no, this is something I, me and Jenny are going to be, well.
No, the whole concept, the free cash versus stabilization, but then I thought the state had.
Oh, yeah, they have, they have.
I thought we were going to engage some of the.
Oh, yeah, no, the the projections, yeah, we've been, we've been working on that.
Okay, you're not done?
Well, they're not doing it, they taught us how to do it, like, we still don't do it, so I can, I can, um.
Okay.
You know, but but the clear goal is going to give us a lot more transparency on, uh, especially on the capital side of where we see the money coming from, not just next year, but over the next, over every project that's in there. Uh, so I'll present that a week from tonight, the cap, the overall capital program, and the financial projections.
And you'll be doing that with ClearGo?
Correct.
Oh, great.
Hundred percent.
That'll be our first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, and uh, then on the financial projections with MasDOR, uh, I'll I'll need to talk to Jenny to see where we are in terms of readiness on that, uh, because she's really been doing most of the work on that, and uh, so I don't want to overstate where we'll be, but that, but yes, that is the idea, is to have uh the projections. And I think this cycle, we will have something, but I don't think for next Thursday, we'll have, we'll have that.
So if we're going to have the capital stabilization, is is the entire stabilization amount going to go into capital, or is some of it going to be stay as stable?
I would say stay as stabilization, and that's going to be the discussion of what kind of safety, you know, what kind of rainy day fund does the town need? And I think, our thinking on that might be a little different now, based on some specific things that have gone on in the last year
Mm-hmm.
than it might have been two years ago, or we might have said, oh, leave a token amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Now we might, we might feel differently.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
So, but that's going to be a policy question. I did talk, we talked earlier this week with uh, Hilltop. Uh, there are new, uh, Standard and Taurus has issued new guidelines on what they are looking for AAA-rated communities to carry in reserves.
Mm-hmm.
And I asked them, uh, and they just sent this to over to us on Monday, I haven't opened the file, needless to say. But but they they made us aware on Monday, there are new guidelines of looking for twenty percent to keep that AAA rating. And so I asked them.
Twenty percent of your operating budget?
Well, that's what I asked them, yes, and and uh, I haven't read the guidelines, so I'll tell you what we talked about, but I haven't, I haven't read the details, so I gotta learn about that. But basically, my questions were twofold, I said, they're looking at twenty percent of your operating budget, even though we're considering water and enterprise funds, should we really be aggregating that? And they said, yeah, because the debt that you issue is general obligation debt, so you really, even though for us, that's different from the rating agencies, that's all the town is the town is the town. The other question I asked them is, you know, I talked about the the account structure that we have, we have stabilization, capital stabilization, OPA, pension liability stabilization, we have free cash, we have a bunch of different savings accounts. And uh, the answer is basically, they're looking at uh, you know, your stabilization plus your unassigned fund balance, which is going to be not exactly the same as free cash, but very similar. So the, so the rating agencies are aggregating those things in terms of whether we have sufficient reserves to be perceived as financially healthy. So there's a lot to this.
Yeah.
You know, whatever, but but in a nutshell, this is some of what you can expect to to hear about and talk about. And uh, I do think ultimately, my takeaway from that conversation was the question of whether you want to keep it in this account or that account is much more to do with a local policy thing than anything to do with how the outside world is going to perceive West Newbury in terms of our financial health.
Okay, so just procedurally, would we transfer money from free cash into stabilization, then to capital?
Yeah.
Or would you just go right to capital, or some of both?
So so I, my my thought is to, I I think uh, to just look at it in order. I think we want to be upfront with the voters on the school issues, whether it's this, that, or the other thing, there's going to be needs, so I think some amount is going to be good, uh, it's probably not going to be underpinned by like some complex formula, it might be an arbitrary amount, two hundred thousand, something like that. Uh, stabilization to capital stabilization, that's the bigger, that's like, okay, what's your, what's your policy objective for what you want to keep in stabilization? In my opinion, everything else should go to capital stabilization, because that's why the funds have been put in.
Right, right, this one.
And then the third one, free cash to to stabilization, uh, I should, I should have said free cash to capital.
That, okay, that was my question.
That's what I meant, yeah.
All right.
Is is really what, and and we know what that is, it's on the order of nine hundred to a million. Uh, you know, the state would say anything above that, put it in your savings account, so. But but, you know, I'll have those numbers.
Okay, I just want to kind of understand.
What the, what what you think that would be.
Okay. Um, all right, so the capital projects, um, I just had a question, do do both of those tractors need to be purchased the same year? Is that in the capital improvement plan, did he have them both for this year?
Yeah.
Okay. Seems like it better to have one this year, one next year, instead of.
They they've been in there for this year, for for a while, so, and I do know, you know, there was one thing, the roadside mower that had been in for next year, that Butch pushed ahead.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I do know he's looking, he's not just, I mean, you know, Butch, he's not just following this on a page, it's the opposite. He's looking at what do we need?
Yeah.
That's what, you know, and and so, you know, you can ask him those questions, but, yeah.
I'm also just a little concerned, all these projects that Brian's going to work on, he's not going to have time to explain anything else.
That's another, we we found them, are they going to be able to?
Yeah, that's that's, and and we haven't had time to have that conversation, a lot of these came in, I didn't know they were coming.
Yeah, that's, that's. Okay. Like yesterday, yeah.
Like, and so that's, uh, we haven't even had time to have that conversation, so.
So do we want to just include everything in the warrant and then take them out if he doesn't, if you, and he decides?
I would say, yeah, that would be my recommendation, just out of deference to to, to, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, and there were things like, he brought to my attention on, um, you know, the air quality issue with. Uh, and there were things like he brought to my attention on, um, you know, the air quality issue with, uh, the water garage. He, they've had the state, you know, D E P here, they did the air quality, I didn't know about any of that, I learned about that on Monday.
Yeah, we got, we got one at the library, it's too big, we take it, put that at this, it's.
But, so, so what I would suggest is, you know, assuming coming out of tonight and they all stay on. I can meet with him, myself, Caitlin, you know, maybe include Jenny in that, uh, and just really go through and kind of like. Really what is the work plan, because if there's stuff that's in fact not gonna get started for a year, like, let's not. Go for funding now.
Right, okay.
But I don't know that that's the case.
Yeah.
But but I can tell you that a number of these were not on my radar, until they were physically submitted, and I was like, oh, more articles, great.
So do you know who initiated the air quality testing?
Uh, I believe it came out of concerns raised by staff who worked there, yeah.
Right, just seems like you should have been in the loop on that, before they contacted the state, you know, yeah.
When you say air quality, you gotta be careful, because the libraries also got one.
Right, that study was done a long time ago.
And separate the two issues.
Two years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I I had a question on the page, school gym floor, any idea what the cost to recoat rather than? I know they said it's not good, but would that make it a maintenance cost and not a capital cost if they recoded it, is that?
Uh, you know, I think Jonathan can speak for himself, though, he's represented to us, we, you know, we met out there, we looked at it. Uh, you know, he said they do recoat and it keeps flaking, and he showed us that it's flaking, and so they're, what they're telling us is that that's not, that's not working.
Hmm.
Uh, and that's what their, their vendor said, but, uh.
Okay.
You know, it's, uh, yeah, I guess that, that's the answer, but it is flaking, I mean.
Are you gonna keep passing it every four or five, just do it once and you'll be done till we?
Until we demolish it.
One thing, we have to.
One thing that was said last Friday that I didn't really press on, because it's, I really have no expertise, but I'd love for one of you to do this. Uh, was, there was something said, it was almost like a throwaway comment, that the type of oil-based. Coating that they used to use is no longer allowed by the state, and now it's something different, and maybe that's.
This is the swarm?
Yeah, and and like, I don't.
Well, yeah, they got, yeah, exactly, there's like zero VOCs allowed now and and.
Okay.
In many coatings.
Got it.
Both coatings.
Okay, so that's something that, like, someone who's more of an operational person, which is any of the three of you, relative to.
Or, or if you ever try to paint your own house.
Yeah, you can have a more intelligent, you know, I was, I took note of the comment, but I'm like not fluent on that, so. But that's something I would like to better understand, is is there's something about how it's done now, which just doesn't have the durability that it used to.
I'm just always skeptical of projects coming from the school that are over the capital, so we have to pay for it, you know? Could they do better maintenance?
Yeah, you're, you're right to be skeptical, but but, yeah, it was, my understanding is they have been doing the coating, it's just not wearing well, yeah.
Any other questions on the capital, or anybody?
What, we look up at questions or whether you wanna leave on or off?
On or off, or questions that Angus can, you know, take back to staff to to try, so that they'll be prepared when we come in, when they come into.
Okay, I thought it was just when they stay on or off.
All right, and you wanna keep on or off? Uh, one thing I did note, the police cruiser replacement, the quote was February twenty twenty-four, is that, does that need to be updated, or is that a typo?
Uh, that's what we got from Dwyer, is probably a typo, I do know, he, so I have an email in the files from November.
Mm-hmm.
Where he gave, he told me it was sixty-seven K for a gas and seventy K for hybrid. Uh, I don't know why he put fifty, and I I did check the balance for the police cruiser fund, there was thirteen thousand in there today. I think those are two questions that I had, uh, one is. Do we wanna assume a draw of ten thousand when there's thirteen today to almost complete that account? Uh, and second was why, why he came in with, I think implicit in that number is a gas powered instead of the hybrid.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's a policy discussion that, uh, he has not had with me, so I think, uh. My recommendation would be to keep the article on, but consider the funding amount. Because I think those are decisions that that we all ought to be part of, is to, how much do you wanna draw from the cruiser revolver fund and and what type of vehicle?
You understand, it's a quote in there.
No, there wasn't, I have an email, and I don't have, I have a.
I thought I saw.
Oh, was there a quote in there? I didn't see it.
I mean, I made notes right along here from the.
There was a, there's a.
Reference to the price.
Yeah, there's an email that I have in my file. Uh, no, yeah, the, the, uh, wait, this, that was from November, where he told me it was gonna be fifty-seven. Or, I'm sorry, sixty-seven or seventy.
It says sixty-seven in the request form, fifty-seven.
No, I'm, I'm looking in the, the narrative, proposed pricings based on budget quotes received in February twenty twenty-four. For twenty twenty-five, for all overdrive until the year.
So, uh, Wendy, I know I mentioned to you the other day, one of my. So, so last year, I wrote this article, because no one else was going to.
Okay, so.
So, my understanding is Dwyer took what I had written a year ago and updated it, is there a typo in there? I don't know.
No, it's probably from last year, he just didn't update the.
Well, exactly, and I would consider a typo, I think it's fine to start with last year as a template, but was it properly updated? And and so, for instance, when it says a ten K draw, is that because he's intending to do that? Or because that's what I included in last year's and he didn't fully proof it, so, so Jim, you, Jim, you were, well, Jim was the. Interface with Dwyer on this article, so, so Jim, how, what's your opinion as to, do you believe this article is exactly what he intends?
Um, I, I can only speak to the, at least, he and I had a conversation about the vehicle type. Um, hybrid versus gas, as opposed to the number, I resent that on a Sunday, and and he came in on Monday. We talked more about the vehicles which he was replacing, which is the next slide, but it really wasn't more than that.
Okay, 'cause I was putting this together Tuesday night, and I had these questions.
Okay.
And so, I, Wednesday morning, I talked to Rebecca, Jim was at a conference, I talked to Rebecca, I said, do we know this is a good form? And, or is this just my form from a year ago, that, like, and and so she verified, she reached out to Jim yesterday morning. He verified and he forwarded that he, this was attached to an email that Dwyer sent Jim, so I said, okay, it came from Dwyer, that doesn't mean there's. Not an issue with it, but it wasn't something, I thought, I didn't know, maybe Jim had done it to try to be helpful. Because we, we've been meeting almost daily, and like, okay, who's doing what articles? And and Jim had been following up with different departments to make sure we were getting the articles, but once I saw that we did in fact receive this from Dwyer. I put it in the packet, because I was comfortable that's where it came from, I have my own questions about it that he and I haven't had a chance to talk about.
All right.
So.
Um, so.
Just back a little bit, on, on, on the, on the police vehicle, um, you know, there was this. You know, we're, we're being presented with the hybrids as being problematic, and and, um, I guess I, I just. Would like to have that fleshed out a little bit, um, you know, we, we did adopt the policy, um, so a few years ago now. Um, and and, um, I just think it's important that we try to make the transition as much as we can.
So we can have that discussion. Yeah, okay, good. Um, I'm assuming Bray Hill Terrace, you wanna talk about that? Or are you okay?
I'd like to strike it.
Okay, why?
I'll see why the town should get involved.
Because we don't have the road.
I, I still say we don't.
Right, well, our council says we do, so.
There is no logic to that, first of all, any other subdivision in town that's ever built a road. It gets built to an approved plan and standards by the town at the cost of the developer, and then the town accepts the road, this is totally backwards. Uh, this is a back, I just, these kind of issues coming in like this just seem crazy.
Yeah, well, Angus and I met with the residents, um, I, I think this is a reasonable way forward. We can't continue, we're not gonna continue to plow it, then that means that red town residents will not have access to that open space property, Bray Hill Terrace.
Why, you can walk in?
Well, if the road's not plowed, is that, uh?
No, I don't know, it goes in an arc to go there.
Yeah, well, the, well, we talked to them, they said there are five or six cars that are there every day. I don't know. Yeah.
I, I just, that issue is, so the town is gonna, what, build the road?
No, I think the, the fir-, no, the first step, we're just talking about the road, not the water line, that's a separate step, because the town has no benefit from that. We do have a benefit from having public access to that road, because we own property on it, right? So, this is just to have a, a study done to say how much it's gonna cost, I don't think the town should bear the entire cost for putting a road in there. Um, but we have to work out with the residents.
It's gonna be a discussion for another evening.
Well, if we want, if you wanna take it out, then we need to decide that. Um.
I think it's a bigger discussion, I'm just very bothered by the whole issue. You know, the developer had a piece of land, they put a road in, it's because you own the budding property, shouldn't obligate you to.
But we're, we're one of the abiders to that road, we, we're on the.
If they moved that road in one inch, is it, you know, I don't go back to nineteen sixty, whatever, when they put it in.
Mm-hmm.
Why does that obligate the town? I just don't understand that component.
I was going based off what our attorney said.
Well, I think, yeah, I think that, you know, it's this derelict beestrap statute, which, which they're saying, you know, on a private road, it's a, it's a rebuttable presumption. Which is a big word, rebuttable, you know, but it's a rebuttable presumption that the owners own to the, the center line. So where, where the owner on the side, we own the land, that doesn't make it a public road, as we know, it's not a public road. But we own the lands that half the road sits on, so that's a, you know, question the neighbors had, is, is, doesn't the town have. You know, some obligation, and these are, it's a, it's complicated questions. I think the intent of this article is to basically do the type of, you know, deeper study of this. Uh, to understand, among other things, what's the condition of the road, and what kind of future investment would be needed. Uh, and is that something the town would wanna consider paying on as public, and if it did, would that be. Associated with any kind of financial plan, i.e. betterments, you know, potentially, that could be assessed or implicated by.
Who bought the Craven property? I don't think there was any expectation whatsoever, that we were gonna own to the sunlight of any road.
I'm sure that that's correct.
So. Deed it over to the homeowners, I mean, why do, why do you have to own that? I just don't even understand why the town would.
I don't think, I don't think you can unilaterally deed it over to them, I, 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 I assume that they have to accept it.
Yeah, in, in their minds, because the town paved it in two thousand nine, they assume that the town, you know, owned the road. Or was being, you know, responsible, Jen Sully said that when, um.
Not two thousand nine, it was like two thousand, it was earlier than that.
Was it?
Yeah.
She said when they bought it, they knew it was a private road, but they were told that the, the town would maintain it.
Well, they were, is, what she, what she said they were told was that they, that it was private, open to the public, or private maintained by the public, which isn't, isn't a thing.
Right.
So, I don't doubt that someone said that.
I think it was Craven, right, that, was it?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't.
Logical to anticipate that's who it was, I have no idea.
But it was two thousand one that the, the five thousand dollars was appropriated, and I think, I think it was two, because remember, it was in the context of like. Post nine eleven, because remember, I made that point, that like, these meetings were like September, October, twenty twenty-one, and I mentioned like, oh, yeah, like, there's some other things going on in the world. Maybe the board wasn't.
So because the town made a mistake at one point, doesn't mean you have to thoroughly compound the issue.
That's true, that's true.
I, I would like to see better access to that property for the public, I mean, I'd like to have an actual parking area, have it be up higher. Right now, if a car's parked there, an emergency vehicle can't get up to Jen Sully's house.
Yeah, I mean, it is interesting, that it's, it's a pretty significant piece of town-owned land. And, um, you know, you can access from hilltop circles, you know, there's, there's not great parking up there, but you can park up there. And and, uh, but that's it, and it would be, would be, I think, a good thing for the town to have another access.
I would wanna propose that as part, if we were gonna upgrade the road, have that be part of it.
One thing that I think would be a good follow-up to this one is, you know, we really haven't had any discussion either as a board or or anyone, to my knowledge. Of what would the scope of such, you know, such study include, and we've talked about things like physical evaluation of like. Depths of subgrade, that like, to what standard was the road built?
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, there might be other things, uh, either instead of or in addition to that, I think if we can flesh out. What exactly this is, uh, questions this is looking to answer, uh, 'cause that could include questions like you've asked of, well. You know, can, can the town like relinquish ownership and what happens to it then?
Hmm.
Uh, some of those, we can ask town council, we don't need a special article for that, but, but I think the idea.
Can of worms you're opening.
I think the can of worms is open, I think it's a matter of what's the end game, is the end game to, to say to these residents. We're gonna, you know, stop providing winter operations and any other support starting next winter, or is the end game working towards some kind of. Public acceptance, and I think that decision needs to be made in the next eight months, and and we can either. Do it without support, or we can do it with some financial resources to, if we need to hire an engineer or hire, you know, some other expert. So, but I do think we need to flesh out what are the questions we're looking to answer, maybe a week from tonight, we could talk a little more detail now.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Because that's what we're gonna need to come up with a budget number anyway.
Right. And if we're gonna resolve this by next winter, if we were gonna, you know, put a road in, then we gotta get busy.
Well, I don't think we're putting a road in next, you know, next winter, I think.
So we're not gonna plow it, or are we gonna?
No, I think, I think if this were brought forward for public acceptance and it were accepted. I, I, I thought the understanding was, was like, is this something that is like imminently gonna need reconstruction in the next. Two to five years, or is it something that's well-built and it's just gonna need periodic top quote?
But can it be accepted as a public roadway if it's not up to standard? I thought that was the whole thing, that we had to upgrade it in order for it to be accepted.
No, no, it could be, the, the town can accept it, it, it would be a, it would, the town would be kind of looking away from its own standards. So what I had suggested is like, rather than just a qualitative, like, you know, ask Butch to go out and like, give his opinion of what kind of shape it's in. My suggestion was look at the subdivision standards.
Mm-hmm.
And and have like an engineering firm come in and do a report on, this is what your standards say, this is what it's built to. So that everybody knows objectively, was it, you know, how does it compare to today's standards that the town would look to? For a road to be suitable to public acceptance, and if it's miles apart, that's important for the town to know. And that way, if the town does make the decision to not work toward public acceptance, the residents will understand that. And not feel like, you know.
We can go back to when the town bought the Craven property, all of a sudden, now we own to the center of the road, but we ended up getting this free land.
It's a rebuttable principle, this derelict beestatute.
It's insane, it almost, the owners could say, no, you don't own this road, get your hands off it, too.
And they can say, we don't know, which is kind of where they were coming from, they're like, they're like, we have a deed, we have a plot plan, it doesn't say we own this road.
Office delivers to our road.
So they, they could rebut that they own anything, we could rebut that we own anything, but.
Let's abandon it then.
And this is, we don't need to, because it's not public, there's no abandonment.
But the other thing.
The can of worms is open, is the point.
At a couple of months ago meeting, we agreed to plow it this year, and you're gonna meet with the residents and let them know the next year was gonna be on them. This has changed.
No, that, we were gonna meet with them to have a.
Because we didn't wanna drop them this year, we said we'd give them the courtesy to plow this year.
Right, but it wasn't the assumption that they were gonna be on their own next year, the, the reason for the meeting was to try to talk about alternatives and and how are we gonna manage this.
Very different, I'm sorry.
It was an ultimatum, I could have just written them a letter.
One, one of the things that, that I think did cost us some time is obviously one of the residences is, is, you know, this, uh. Active town off, town business watcher, and she, she, once she was made aware, she requested that the board not. Talk about this further until there be a meeting with the neighbors, now, you didn't have to do that, you could put it on any agenda, but as a courtesy. Led to, okay, we gotta meet with the neighbors, it took a while to put that together because of schedules.
And one of the neighbors, one of the abiders did not come.
That's right, even one of the three, even after all the work that was done, letters and and email coordination and so forth. But but I made that point when we met with the neighbors, it's like, we really lost some time because of that residence request that the board not. Really dig into this since it was first brought up last summer, um.
So, Chris, can you wrap your head around just doing this so we know what it would take to accept it, and that we can?
Depends on what that number will be, I guess.
For, for the study, what that number will be, yeah.
So would you be all right with leaving it on, and then we can always withdraw it if the study's?
Not for now, see where it goes, I just.
All right.
I find it very distasteful.
I know, I knew you would.
So, so do we have any, you know, do we have any guess what TBD? So, so do we have any, you know, do we have any guess what TBD equals?
No.
I, it has everything to do with scope. You know, I think what I've set out.
I think what you said is.
Could probably be done for under ten thousand dollars.
Tons of big dollars is what I see. Or the bad dogs. There you go.
Alright, um, I, last night just remembered about the drinking water well exploration, so slid that in there. Are you alright with that? Just to put more money.
I know you already had money left over still.
No, we have, we have what fifteen thousand? Not, not enough to.
Yeah. It's in the, it's in the, uh, sunset, uh.
Oh, the sunset one, yeah, but that's.
But, but it's not, but that's got, the reason I'm bringing that up, that's got the exact, oh.
We're looking for another fifty or something, right?
Well, that's just a number I put out because I was doing it at ten thirty last night.
Not happening if you do it now, would it change?
No. But, I mean, what if this well, uh, test is, is successful next week? The next stage is to do perfectly with the D E P. And we wanna wait till fall town meeting to get money to do.
No, you can leave it on.
No, we'll, we'll see it there and we have, we have few weeks to figure out whether or not, but it doesn't hurt to leave it there. It's easy to.
It's what I was looking for. So yeah, this is, I, I just ran these numbers, uh, last night, actually.
At ten o'clock? No, it's the two.
No, it's later.
Alright, so seventeen thousand?
So, that's as of today.
Oh, then we have to pay for the drilling.
Yeah, so, so there's not gonna be a whole lot.
Oh, that doesn't, okay, so that's not.
Well, actually, you know what? It's show, since we're doing conferences. Since we're doing conferences, I think, I gotta.
Yeah, I, I, but I mean, my, my sense is, my sense is that that's a reasonable number that would be left.
Yeah, my guess is that now that, cause once the contract is gonna show up as having been spent, even though the money hasn't left the, the board. So, so I think seventeen is probably a.
Was.
A good number.
But, so if this location doesn't pan out, then we wanna just keep going, right? So that would be another fifty to do seismic and. What are you smirking at, Chris?
Loving life.
Alright.
No, and, and, and it would be better and I have funds available now as opposed to waiting till next fall.
Yeah.
I'm optimistic. It's gonna be so much water out there, they're gonna need equipment to get.
That would not permit getting a road out there, which is gonna be a nightmare. Any other questions on that section?
Section.
Um, so on the number forty-three, the, um, roof mounted solar, it looks like. One of the tables in here is, uh, repeated.
We said we don't pay attention once we do that document, so there.
I think this is just excerpted from the.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to have some stuff for people not familiar with it.
Yeah, but this may be in the report and I didn't, just maybe. So, looks like table twenty-three and twenty-four are the same table. But one's a salt shed roof and one is the ground mounted.
Yeah, I think what would be good would be, I, I did this quickly. I just, I wanted to have something for like a layperson not, who might not have looked at the study. What would be ideal, I, as I was putting it together, I was like, jeez, I wish it didn't mention, uh, other locations.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I put in like, the scope of the study is, is specifically not the other locations. I can definitely, obviously I was on a deadline to get this done for tonight. You know, I can put together a more concise backup that's just on.
My concern was that this is how the report actually is and that we don't have accurate numbers to know what we're gonna save.
Oh, I see.
So I, I just, I didn't have time to go back and look at.
Sorry, you know, I, I did not get through all of those today. And so this, these are just excerpts out of. The, the solar site. Okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll go back and, and pull it up and just, I don't know if it's just a mistake in the report, but I wanna make sure we have accurate numbers of what yield we're gonna get.
Yeah, but what I could do for, for, you know, once this is sent around, assuming this stays on to, uh. Think I'm, obviously I put in the amount right now, just so TBD, cause I just got the amount today. I could take out the backup and then push this, you know, it's not the first think come article. And we can tighten up a backup that's more concisely describes this site, nah.
Yeah.
That was just all I had on file.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So it's, then it's the final report, so.
Yeah.
You know, work, works and all, whatever. But the other thing is, uh, yeah, the other thing is. The amount is well over twenty thousand dollars. So, well, when I put this together, I hadn't. Envisioned that as a, uh, capital article, it would make a chapel article, so.
Yeah.
Um, the only other two I had are bylaw amendments. Did either of you have any other ones you thought you should?
Hope to talk a regional agreement out of there.
That should be off, right?
That's correct.
Or do you think there's any reason to leave it on there?
Well, so it will, it probably should come off.
That email was, was unbelievable.
I, I, I read that and I was like, where did this come? I mean, like, how did this, this, this?
They did an entire review of the whole document.
Yeah, and, and, and has this stuff really been all wrong for the last time, forever?
It's almost like the Widdy thing.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I was, yeah, absolutely appalled by it. So, the follow up I've done since then. I talked to Justin at some length to find out what went on back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Long story short, it was Greg LeBrack, who was really the point of contact with Desi. Me, Carol and, and Denise Okosty, who was Rebecca Oldham's predecessor, we had no involvement. We weren't, we weren't copied on anything. We had no visibility. And so we all thought, like. I mean, it seemed to us like it was kind of like a rubber stamp type process where Desi was like reviewing the amendment. We were never aware of any drama, any. Back and forth between, you know. And so that's part of why we were like just completely floored when we got this. So, so Justin said, yeah, it was Justin was, or not Justin. Uh, Greg LeBrack had been kind of the, the conduit. And then I did get a response, which I can't remember. I think I forwarded the response I got a day or so ago. So I did get a response from Christine Lynch, answering my email. And she basically, you know, was, I went to email, but basically was saying, yeah, we're, we're responding to. Policy direction from the state and so on and so forth, that we are kind of doing like comprehensive reviews. My, my approach to this, I have my monthly compacted finance team meeting is Tuesday, so I'm in with, with Rebecca. Rebecca and Carol, although Carol's just back in Florida, she might not make it.
Wasn't she skiing like she?
Yes, she was, yeah. Anyway, so we have our finance meeting Tuesday. So, my thought would be let's meet as a team, read Christine Lynch's response closely. See if we feel there's some opportunity to push back and say, hey, we hear what you're saying. But if, if you're gonna hold the line in this, you're gonna set us back years. Can you, can you please just look at what we're amending? And just like make a push. It might go nowhere.
Yeah.
But I think if I take, if we take it off the warrant, this thing's dead for the foreseeable future. I'd say let's leave it on for a couple of weeks. It's probably gonna be dead anyway, but I'd like to at least make some prevail upon them to say, look, we've been working on this for two years. Can you just like limit your focus to that? And then the next time we agree. But yeah, I talked to, uh, you know, like my counterparts. Like, if we're supposed to review this every three years and this is the nature of review. We're never gonna stop reviewing, cause it would take three years to process what he sent us. So.
Okay, are you guys alright with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Alright.
Yeah, I was, I was afraid it was just gonna complete the whole off here, so.
Yeah.
I mean, period with that.
You know, and I'll make the point about the capital threshold. That's a tangible thing that we've been working on actively for two years and discussing for many years. Is the state gonna stand in our way of modifying our agreement where there's consensus among the three towns? And if so, maybe we call Senator Tar and see if he, you know, I just, I feel like. You know, it's, it's worth the effort to just push it a little bit.
Yeah. Alright, what do you think about the animal bylaw?
I'm surprised.
Yeah, I mean, I just happened to hear about this meeting, I think the pond meeting. So I crashed it, really, I was not welcome there. But, um, I, I mean, it's something, there's been more incidents since we last talked and actually. Uh, uh, assault related to an incident, so it's something that we have to do something on you. This is not gonna solve the problem, I don't think, but.
It would be a distraction to town meeting again. It will take a longer conversation.
I don't think so. Maybe, I mean, these are people that would be in favor of it. I, I sent it to them, I sent it to Mill Pond and the only feedback I got was, well, maybe it should be three thousand instead of two. So, I think this is like a low level revision that we could get passed and then we can.
The whole thing is it's focused on, uh, Wes Newry talks about residences and it's mostly people from out of town with these issues. That's the problem.
Yeah.
And it, I was up there walking and I counted twenty-one dogs off leash. That was crazy. Yeah, it's a couple of weeks.
On the fields probably, right?
Everywhere, fields, trails, everywhere. Actually, it was one group. Must have been ten people. They each had dogs out walking. They're all, they, they were very behaved. But then there was others on the far field and the dogs come chasing you right down, so.
Are the new signs up yet?
I don't know.
Have you seen the new signs?
I've been up, I haven't seen them.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'm sure with the soil, which hasn't really.
Anyway, yeah, I don't, you can put it on. I think with this many bylaws or this many, uh, war, we're gonna need two nights.
Uh, yeah, I think we need that anyway.
Okay.
But. Rebecca, you alright leaving this on? It's really not anything controversial.
Yeah.
But it does address some of the administrative stuff and the, um. The, the animal control officer said having it say voice recall gives her a lot more authority to enforce it. Immediate control is just too subjective.
Okay.
That's something, you know.
Yeah.
Alright. And what about the right to farm?
We've got it twice.
Yeah. So do you agree with that approach?
No, let the citizen petition go, right? That way this.
Well, so the idea behind this is that we could bring forward one that we agreed with by having the citizens petition. They're not gonna go through any review. They're not getting input from town departments, you know.
So we'd have to run it around at this point?
No, we'd just take the template and leave commercial in there and. And, you know.
Put one against the other town meeting?
Yeah.
That's gonna confuse a lot of people.
I mean, yeah, they have made significant revisions, so I. No, they did from the previous time, they took out the fines.
Took out the fines, but they still have the commercial then.
No, that's the only, only.
But they, they will not change that.
So, okay, now I would like, I would agree with your approach.
I would have to do a lot of education with people on this end.
Here's, here's a question that, and that might be. And I know I'm the one who kind of brought to some of some ideas, so, but. But, uh, could be procedurally entered. Part, part of why we arrived at this is. Once they submit this as a petition, they can't amend it, even if, let's say, three or four, five weeks from now. They all said, oh, we actually agree with this. They can't, because once they've submitted it, the petitioners, they can't change their con. And so that seems to kind of impede any value of the review process and even if they're willing to agree, they can't change it. What if, what if, uh, instead of doing a competing bylaw, which will be confusing. What if, if the select board didn't come around to support what they proposed verbatim? What if the approach instead was to do an amendment on the floor? And work with them to try to make that a friendly amendment? And then if it's not a friendly amendment, you say you're gonna oppose it.
I think you do the opposition now, but they know that this is.
No, cause I didn't wanna go there unless you were in agreement. I'm afraid we don't have enough time then, because I talked to two people last night that had no idea about the commercial versus non-commercial. They thought this was a great bylaw, they have a Facebook page. When I said that, they were like, that's terrible. I don't want. So if we wait till town meeting fourth.
Okay.
You know, we just don't have enough time.
Okay, alright.
No, I, I like the idea of the two, but maybe when they come in and we can say, we've got our own, but it includes it. And I think you can from the very start. Say they're identical except for the commercial component. And this is, gives the citizens a choice.
Yeah.
They can't amend it, cause that would be, that would be a significant amendment on town.
Yeah.
Laws.
Additionally, there's one section where they have to file things with the town clerk. Which Angus and I have said on multiple occasions, it should be the assessor as well.
Oh, okay, I didn't notice that.
Page seventy-eight.
Well, yeah, we, we met with them a couple of weeks ago, uh, me and Caitlin and Christian met with them. And I think, and Rebecca was part of that. And I think we did feel that a binder in the clerk's office. Anyhow, we, we can talk about that, cause I, I think we felt that a binder in the clerk's office might be a good place to have these filings.
Okay.
But there'd be other changes I would make to that if we did.
Okay.
One thing they said, uh, in any imminent danger, they would report it to the board of health. Maybe it's the police chief that would have, you know, who knows what the issue is.
If it's imminent danger.
Yeah, every time. Maybe it should, should be somebody else. It shouldn't always be board of health.
So do you still have your comments from?
I don't know where that went. I think I gave it to a certain select work, yeah, that passed it on to a certain committee that probably.
Alright, then I have it. Do you send it by email?
No, uh, I don't know.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll look for it.
Either way, go through and modify again, that's not.
Alright. Interestingly enough, I mentioned this last night, um. To, uh, the Evergreen farmers and they had, um, stopped going to these meetings because they felt like it was becoming too. It wasn't in their favor as a.
I sort of found that when they were here last time. You could see that the legitimate commercial farmers were very quiet and almost cowering down.
Yeah. I have other questions too about how it affects, you know, the Wetland Protection Act, agriculture is excluded. So does this mean that all private homeowners are gonna be excluded from Wetland's Protection Act if it's farming activities? You know, I mean, that's like a permutation that, yeah, so. Alright, so we're not taking anything out?
That's in the funding.
I do think we need two, two nights, but organizing which articles are on which night was gonna be.
Well, you, you can't do that. It's the problem, is what Casey will say and Jim will say, and they're right. Is if it's on a warrant, even if you list it, even if you, like, you can't say to people ahead of time, hey, we're not gonna pick up the policy items. Till the second night, because nothing prevents someone from taking something out of work.
Uh, you can still, you can still curate the warrant that way and then they have to make the request. It doesn't stop, but it reduces.
Right, yeah, the only way to do really two nights would be to have two separate town meetings. You could do a special town meeting. You could do a town meeting, annual town meeting Monday. You could do a special town meeting with your financial articles. And you'd have to have a separate town meeting on Tuesday with a separate warrant. That would be the only way you could assure people that, for instance. MBTA communities is not gonna come up till a second night.
So we're jumping conversations too, because it's the issue of the auditorium, gymnasium and all that.
Yeah.
So I started thinking about this later today. We might not have the opportunity to get to gymnasium two nights in a row, cause that's a heavily used, right, facility. So now I started thinking, well, if somebody said do it outdoors. How about, is there an opportunity to do it in the gymnasium on a Saturday? That way you could start at noon, you could take a break in the middle if it's running, I mean. Cause nobody's, this eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night's not gonna fly, but.
In, in Westford, they did that. They, they started at like nine o'clock on a, on a Saturday morning. They, they actually had lunch, you know.
Bring a couple of food trucks.
And by one thirty or two, and this, you know, it worked well.
I think that could be done if it's indoors. If, like, somebody said outdoors, I think in the packet, then it depended on weather.
Yeah.
If you did it in the auditorium, whether you brought in food or had a food truck or whatever.
Yeah.
Took up a, a one hour break in between. I think that could fly better than. Two meetings, cause I don't know if you're gonna get to gymnasium two nights. It's a big imposition on the school. Cause every time I'm in there, it's always used and heavily used.
Yeah.
So.
I, I thought the outside town meetings when we did them were great, but there was a risk every time. And every time. We got the long straw.
Yeah, I know. Definitely short straw.
You wanna bet on that one this year, Rick?
Um, so, I, I mean, I'd love to do it outside. I just, I'd really like that, but personally. But, um, and the other thing is that, um, not everybody does come prepared for the fact that, um, you know. At that time of year, you're not that far from the sun or solstice where the sun is as intense as it's gonna be and. You know, I think probably a lot of people went home with sunburns and.
It might, might give a COVID, uh, remember a shock too.
Right.
One thing we've thought about a little bit is, uh. So obviously the, uh, public safety rule has been on our radar for quite a while, um. The, the other public safety ones, namely the dispatch the MA flooring and the dispatch entryway, those are examples of ones that I didn't know. Until they were submitted this week. And so we talked a little bit, I think Jim and I talked about, um, and with Rebecca, Rebecca like. You know, wouldn't it make sense to like batch those? It's like, well, but if it goes over twenty, but that's a really, like, I think, isn't that like really problematic?
Well, that's what I'm assuming, that's why he did it.
Maybe, but, but. Maybe, but, but to me, like, if you, so I, I, I gave us an example when, when I'd met with Caitlin, O'Brien, and Butch, uh, maybe a week or, two, two, two to three weeks ago, I gave them an example of an article that Wayne had done three or four years ago, and you, you probably remember it, it had, I don't know, hundred and twenty-six thousand, it was some, something like that, and it said, these are the projects of, these are the types of projects we want to advance, we're not gonna be able to get all these done, we're gonna go, go as far as we can with the money. The individual projects, it included this furniture, the entry, you know, all that stuff, but it was one article. There were individual things within that that maybe were over twenty, I don't think any of them were, I think Capitol reviewed it because there was no reason not to, but I would love to look at like aggregating some of those to say public safety building improvements.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I just don't wanna, you know, so much time and effort has gone into the public safety roofing, Brian's put a lot into scoping that and getting quotes and things. You know, it just, there is something appealing, I admit, to like dispatch entryway and dispatch, right, to not have one more committee reviewing those. But I think from a logic standpoint, it would make a lot of sense to just pull that to public safety building improvements, aggregate that, it, it kind of somewhat addresses Chris's critique about too many articles, not really, because the substance is the same, but, but at least, at least it's not maybe as daunting, you know, if, if, so, I don't know, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that's fine, I mean, there was some objection from Casey, I remember.
To that article?
Compiled, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand why, because you start fracturing people, I don't think we should spend it on this, somebody, I don't think we should spend it, so you can lose votes that way, it can, it can fracture.
Better passed, but there was some.
But there's also, there was, there were, you know, criticisms last spring, uh, and, and prior cycles at like so many articles, and some of them are seven thousand, eight thousand, like, I think some number of voters are like, who, who were there for the main event that's at the end of the agenda, and they're like, they, I think felt it was like, it, maybe it wasn't a great look, so, we, I, that's a formatting issue.
So that's not something we need to decide tonight, if we're gonna?
No, I don't think so, in, in my opinion, you're, you're, that you're deciding substantially what's on the warrant.
Okay.
How that forms in terms of articles and possibly batching things, you know, I would wanna get that pinned down fairly soon, but I, I don't, you need to know that tonight.
Okay. Um, the one, uh, bylaw we didn't talk about is the capital bylaw, um, I feel like now is the time, and now would be the best time to have a conversation about the continued operation or the continued.
Value of KCSD?
Not value, but the, um, the makeup of it, how it operates and, you know, could it be part of FinCon? You know, they're down two members already, and, you know, I don't know. There's never a good time, but I think now might be.
The discussion was kind of pushed forward a while ago, and then when they were in here for their review of the committee things, I brought it up, and then this kind of slammed down pretty hard, like I shouldn't be writing it up.
Well, I'm, I'm ready to bring it up, I think it creates a lot of.
I'm not bringing it up, no.
Well, I'll do it, I just, I think it creates a lot of work for Angus that's not beneficial.
Well, you know, so I've been on it for several years, and, and, um, I just don't see a lot of, um, added value from it.
I think for the town minutes, almost, it's redundant at this point.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think things are reviewed very thoroughly already, and, and, uh, you know, and for, um, the staff that have to go to one more meeting, you know, they have to present their article one more time. It, it, you, you know, it, there's a small subset of people in town, you know, people who participate in committees basically, who get more information than anybody else on those particular topics. But, I, I don't see that.
Go to the FinCon, maybe if it's a lot of.
Right.
I think you could argue it, it diminishes, because if we're spread thin, which we are, to where we can't do everything we, we want or need to do, which we can't, spending that time to support another committee, that's time that would be going to, so, so I, I think you could argue that, like, the FinCon probably gets a lesser, you know, they get less because there's only twenty-four hours of the day, so it's, it's like cannibalizing. I like that concept you mentioned, whether you're possibly like a capital, uh, I don't know, now that, maybe like a subcommittee, or but like a, a dedicated capital project review function of the finance committee. So that some number of people, maybe it goes to be a seven-member committee, and maybe three of those are part of the capital, you know.
You're saying the FinCon goes to a seven?
Yeah, I'm just thinking out loud, but, but.
Thanks for the light.
But, or, or if it's five or two, but, but I think having, you know, some, someone specifically focused on like long-term, bigger ticket items makes some sense, uh, but having that housed within the finance committee, that would give the finance committee, that way they're getting everything, because right now, one of the issues we have is they're getting everything, but capital is two, so it's, it's duplicative. And given finite resources, we just shouldn't be duplicating effort. Uh, if, if FinCon was content to say, hey, we're gonna defer to CIC, I don't think we'd be having this conversation, but we have a FinCon that wants to be into every article, so it becomes duplicative. Uh, so I did do some outreach to a couple of listservs in the last few weeks or so, I did get some interesting responses. Uh, I can share those now that this topic is kind of on the table, I'll share those around the full board, but one of the responses, uh, basically was exactly, you know, that, they said, yeah, we used to have a CIC, now our FinCon does all the reviews. Another town said, oh.
Just don't appoint them.
And they said, they said they just, the, their select board basically candidly concluded the CIC wasn't needed. Uh, so they just stopped reappointing them, and they didn't amend the bylaw.
I, 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 I agree, we talked about that, but I, our bylaw, we can't do that, because it says we shall appoint.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, that wasn't, it was just kind of funny.
Yeah, no, and.
But the point is, that was a town, I think it was the town of Weston, uh, you know, and they, their board had come to the conclusion that there wasn't, there wasn't really adding any value, so.
Yeah.
I can share those listserv things around, and if we wanna work out this bylaw a more.
Yeah, so I mean, that would mean significant work to amend the bylaw. I mean, we wouldn't abolish it, right? We've just changed it.
I don't know.
Okay, so, is that something we wanna take on this cycle?
I don't think you have the.
Well, you know, you got a point, we don't have anything else to do. So.
I, I just.
Rick will do it, what do you need to do to sell it?
Well, I guess it's, do you wanna entertain what the committee has proposed? Or do you want to, uh, take it off altogether, or do you wanna do something that's related to bylaw, but more broader?
So in order to change the make, or to make it a FinCon function, don't we need to amend the bylaw?
Yeah.
So we would have to have a, a replacement bylaw?
Yeah.
Or repeal the CIC bylaw and change the FinCon bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, that's probably a cleaner way to do it.
Yeah. Which would be a lot altogether in the cycle.
Yeah, um, so, um, of course, there's, there's, uh, always questions about what's appropriate to have at annual town meeting, and what's appropriate to have at fall town meeting, which is a special town meeting. And I don't, yeah, I don't think this fits. You, you know, I, I don't think repealing the existing bylaw and or changing the FinCon bylaw to adopt that responsibility fits into this meeting, is it appropriate, and I, I don't like the problem personally, if it, if it's not the fault, but that question will be raised.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of a significant town function.
Like cultural.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would recommend leaving this on for now and having a conversation with the, the two members of the, um, CIC that aren't on the select board of FinCon, and just say this is what we're thinking, and maybe work with FinCon to come up with something else in the next two weeks. That sounded reasonable.
Yeah, and, and so if we do that, though, then we don't want these revisions, we don't wanna waste time at town meeting on revisions.
No, but I'm just saying, let's just leave it in there until we decide if we want to amend the FinCon or try to do something different with capital improvement.
I, I would say if you take that approach, just let's make sure that you, something tonight that specifically encompasses that these amendments could, could involve both of those bylaws.
Yeah.
So that once you close the warrant, you're not having to explain that the FinCon bylaw wasn't part of the scope or something.
Yeah, so.
I think that would be the right approach if you wanna do that as.
I'm confused by what she said.
So, so if, if the, if the end game was to amend the FinCon bylaw to give, to basically vest responsibility for capital project review in them, and simultaneously they either, you know, either amend or presumably repeal the CIC bylaw, if all this says is capital committee bylaw amendments, and you close the warrant, someone will come in later and say, well, you didn't say anything about the FinCon bylaw. So I'm saying, if you weren't going that direction, when you close the warrant, make sure you give clear direction by whatever you say tonight that the scope, well, I, I.
Yeah, so. I think personally that we have too much on the, uh, the warrant, or we will have too much on the warrant already, and that would be better to do it at the fall town meeting, which of course will cause some angst somewhere, because, you know, it's a change of a bylaw, change of, you know, stand longstanding committee, but at the same time, um, we just have too much on there, and, you know, we should, I, I don't, I don't think we should be adding more complexity than we have already.
Or that's a good phrase, and the complexity, because to address how you.
Yeah, I mean.
Shift this now is too complex to accomplish.
If we're gonna do that, then I would take the capital bylaw off the warrant.
Right.
And then deal with them both in the fall.
We can let them know the intention, what we're thinking.
And then that will start the conversation, so when does the capital improvement committee typically start meeting? I mean, is that gonna?
They've already scheduled a meeting for Tuesday.
I mean, for, when they're, for the next cycle, do they start in November?
Normally it would be like October, November, uh, last summer, they did start meeting over the summer. Interestingly, to talk about bylaw, yet the first draft bylaw wasn't circulated until about, what, ten days ago?
Yeah.
So it was interesting, because they met over the summer, but didn't actually produce a draft.
Delay the schedule then, if we wait until the end of next October to make this change, is that gonna?
No.
No?
No, under the, under the, uh, the capital planning policy, uh, which is based on the DLS model, it says, uh, honor, honor by November first, the town manager presents the capital program, so that's kind of the official kickoff.
Okay, all right.
To the capital planning season.
Okay.
So something to understand, or which you may already realize with that committee right now, is that we already are at the absolute minimum of number of members that, you know, we are, the quorum is four.
Right, that's why I'm thinking it's an opportune time to make a change, um, because there's less people that will be, but then we have the appointment in June, I don't know how he'd allow that, maybe just not a point.
Um, both members aren't up until twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Oh, okay. Jim, you sound terrible. What are you doing still here? Get some sleep. All right, so do we wanna vote to take that off? That's the only, is that, still in the, I think we'll.
Or maybe just vote the whole slate minus that one.
Okay.
That's, uh.
I feel like it traded in my, I mean, I just, I, you know, the, the matter is that I just don't think it brings a lot to the table.
Yeah. All right, someone wanna make a motion then?
Sure, I guess, uh, all we're gonna do is we're gonna move the, we, um, retain all articles shown as, um, dental, or as, on, on, on the current listing of ATM and SDM articles. Uh, except that we remove the one relative to, uh, uh, was it number fifty-five?
Yeah.
Um, relative to the capital provision committee by law.
Yeah, close the warrant?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, close the warrant.
Yeah, right.
Second.
Right, more favor? All right. So, item H, referral of proposed capital articles to the capital improvement.
Capital.
All right, so, as page one fourteen, your packet, and, uh, yes. So I think we'd be looking at adding to this list the, uh, uh, at least the, uh, soft shed work, uh, but potentially also this Lucas, I don't, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's that, I don't really, this is another one, I didn't know about it until it was submitted, so I don't know anything about it. Twenty thousand even.
That seems like a good grant opportunity.
For the, hey, uh, Jim, not to put you on the spot, but I know you were the kind of, uh, you know, interface with Dwyer on, on his articles, uh, or at least to some extent. Did he give you any background on this Lucas item? Because I literally had never heard of it until I saw the article request.
Yeah, um, the way he explained it essentially is currently if someone needs chest compressions, um, it's a human doing it, uh, the Lucas device takes over for the human, um, so it's a much more, uh, consistent and, um, essentially, uh, continuous rhythm as opposed to somebody's gonna get tired, they're gonna have to switch out, the same beat's not gonna continue. Um, it's essentially to just keep someone alive until the professionals can get there to take them to the hospital.
And there was no quote or anything?
That's all I got.
Yeah, okay.
I just referred anyways, I'm sorry.
You could do nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
You could do that.
No, but I mean, it, it does sound like a capital item, you know?
No, it, I, I think it's a substantial device.
Need to be replaced every ten years, so if something would wanna program in for future replacement, if we purchased it.
Yeah. And two thousand dollar batteries every four years?
I think it's also a newer technology, um, and so, uh, I would perceive the cost of this may go down in the future once it becomes kind of standard in every fire department, um, but this is the first I've ever seen of it, um, anywhere. But the, the main idea is that nobody knows how to use, like, everyone's afraid to use an I, uh, the AED as it is, the electrical shock. Um, this would be, a firefighter shows up, puts it on a person, and, and it just starts.
So this would provide defibrillation as well, or is it just chest compressions?
Just chest, chest compressions.
Okay, so they still have to use the AED?
To, to get the hearts started pumping, yes, this would continue someone's heart to pump if it's not going to pump. So if you, if you get shocked and it doesn't start, they would, I think they would put the Lucas device on, and they would just continue to keep this person's heart pumping.
All right. So where are we?
So we're at referring, uh, I believe, eleven articles to capital, that would be the list on page one fourteen with the additional suction and the Lucas, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what about the combined, um, dispatch building stuff? Would that be?
Uh, I kind of like the idea of rolling that into just public safety building improvements.
Yeah, so would that be referred then, or is that already, are those things?
Well, I think, I think you could say to, uh, to, you know, uh, we would just expand the scope of the public safety roof.
Okay.
And to say public safety building improvements, and we would, we would, uh, you know, kind of rewrite the article to include all three under one.
Okay, that sounds good. I know. It's gonna be great. All right, do we have to vote, or is it?
Uh, just to refer to CIC.
All right. Make a motion to refer the articles one through nine is listed, adding the salt shed is ten, and the Lucas fire is eleven to the CIC.
All right, more favor? All right, I missed some, oh, this is the sixty-one A thing, so. I feel like the reason that we asked for the assessors to notify Angus and us is to make sure that town staff are aware so that they could properly permit stuff, and somehow that got turned into like, uh, advance notice for committees with special interest to approach the owners, I'm really not crazy about somebody that has no, um, authority to negotiate for the town approaching somebody about their property.
We did make the motion at the time to include open space.
I know, so I'm, I'm asking to revisit that, because I don't think that's appropriate, um.
Yeah, no problem with it, because they generally are the ones leading the charge.
What are they gonna do with that? They're gonna go to the person and say?
No, they can stop the conversation in an open space. It just gives them a little more leave time, what, you can.
Yeah, I, I really dislike the idea. Um, because the, the point of this was not to preempt the normal sixty-one A process. The point was to give town staff the ability, like, planning board, so that they know that they have to be aware that this could be covered under. The point was to give town staff the ability like planning board so that they know that they have to be aware that this could be covered under sixty one. Um, you know, this last time it was before the board of health and the planning board and that connection hadn't been made. So I would prefer, I mean, if we don't have, it doesn't have to be the select board, I think as long as the um, town manager is notified. That person can inform staff so that we can make sure that town departments are properly managing them. Otherwise, I feel like we should notify the planning board. It's not only open space, it could be other things that.
I'm fine with that if you want, but I'd like to make another com, you know, memo too. You said you don't like revisiting issues.
Yeah.
I think if you are concerned about them, you should, I don't.
Well, that's my bringing it up.
No, I said, don't have the hesitation.
Yeah.
And if you wanna change it, I don't, I can, I don't care either way, to be honest.
Do you think we should leave the select board in or just?
I think we should leave the select board in.
Okay, because they do have negotiating.
Right, which is, I think, how it was written.
It was, it was.
So I think your position is you support it as it was proposed, but the kind of revision that was made kind of on the fly. You so just supported as it was proposed two weeks ago.
Yeah, I, are you alright with that, Rick? I mean, I noticed the lobbying against this, but um.
I'm, I'm, you know, I'm overwhelmed with what we had to go over today, and I don't remember the details of it, I. You know, I know you are too.
Yeah.
I just tried to digest everything since uh, four o'clock yesterday afternoon to.
Yeah.
Four o'clock today.
Yeah, it was, it was this, this is from the January uh, twenty third packet. It was this about, you know, this sentence here. The assessing department shall promptly provide those the select board and town manager, the land's respective were moved and I think it was open space committee. Wanted to also be.
Yeah, okay, and I, I think that's just fine, what it says right there and, and. And I don't think it needs the addition of open space because I think open space will will be notified anyway.
Yeah, okay, are you alright with that, Chris? Right, should we re-vote or?
Yeah, uh.
Okay, wh- what are we voting on to have the original version or?
Well, so, so it's what was uh, proposed in the January twenty third um, packet. Uh, as, as. No, no, it's, it's a, it's a procedure, yeah, policy, yeah.
I'll make a motion uh, on the policy relative to the sixty one A proposed amendments of January twenty third, twenty twenty five. To approve it as presented.
Very, I'll give it.
Alright, hi.
Thanks.
Um, one thing that I did say in that uh, email is I think it might be good to take that letter that I sent to the middle of the street and just make it neutral and then have the assessors hand that out when somebody withdraws, just so that they're aware. So we're on to the police union memorandum of agreement for F Y twenty five to F Y twenty seven. So we just have to accept the terms of this, Angus?
Yeah, uh, find account accounts already calculated retro pay, which would take effect with this uh, upcoming payroll. Uh, so this is just a request to formalize uh, in the open session what you have uh, previously discussed in uh, executive session.
Motion to accept the police union memorandum of agreement for fiscal year twenty five, fiscal year twenty seven, third.
All favor?
Alright, hi.
Thank you.
Um, conflict of interest to code disclosures for the summer record director and assistant director.
Uh, one thing I'll know, I, I noticed as I was putting the packet together the other night, but one of the pages got scanned improperly. Page two, the assistant directors, uh, so I did, I do have uh, my papers that.
This is the same as last year, right?
The same, yeah, the, the other thing that was kind of a glitch of what was in the packet is uh, and I think it's just a matter of, you know. Uh, so the, 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 kind of the whole point of this is this checkbox here. This contract was made after public notice or through competitive bidding. She didn't check it. It was, we posted the job. That's the whole point of all of this, is we are legally obligated to post the job. So Amy didn't check that. It was posted, that's the entire point is to check.
So do you have to circulate this back to her then?
No, I, so that, so Rebecca checked it. And I didn't find this till Tuesday night, and then I talked to Rebecca Wednesday, I said, like, the one box needed to be, all this narrative, that wasn't needed. All was needed, just the job was posted before we hired, and this, and, and I think everyone knows this is solely because the employees are employees of our school district. If they were employees of some other school district, we wouldn't have needed a post. This, this has a bad, this state uh, ethics, so.
So is it worth circling back?
I, I think if, if it's, if it's suitable, I mean, this only needs to be done before the summer, so there's no urgency, we're just looking.
No, I think we can stop.
But I, yeah, I, I think I would just let them know that, hey, when, you know, the board accepted the disclosure. It was understanding that that box should have been checked, uh, because the jobs were in fact posted.
Okay.
So make a motion to accept both notices of disclosure and conflict of interest pending Amy checking off the appropriate box. The contract was made after public notice.
And what about Julia?
So I have that part, I grabbed the part. It wasn't in there because I got the, the scan, one of the pages, oh, here, yeah, one of the documents was two sided, and whoever scanned it didn't notice. Uh, so I've got hers right here. Yeah, she, she, she checked.
Okay, alright, so the motion is good. Alright, second, all favor?
Alright.
Alright, on two minutes, um. You'd be happy to know have only one change. Alright, so the first uh, November twenty fifth, I M D, the second sentence, it just should be negotiations. On water related matters, not and. Rick, did you have any?
No, I did not.
Alright.
I'm going to accept the minutes in November twenty fifth as amended.
Second, all favor?
Alright.
Jim, did you get that change?
Yeah, we're, okay, um, on the next step, on um, I M F, I had a couple edits. Um, on the recent dog bite incident, on the third sentence. Um, the two dogs didn't, one dog bit the other, the other one wasn't part of it. So I would just say one unleashed dog and had recently bitten another. I'm not even sure the other dog was unleashed, I think they might have been leashed. And then in I M C, um, this is on the watershed plan, it, did, did you cite errors in the plan or was it just the? This is when we got the response, the final plan.
I'm sorry, which, which?
Sorry, uh, same, uh, general discussion.
Oh, okay, absolutely, got it.
My comment was that you and Jack and the other gentleman had found so many errors and omissions in the, in the original document, not in the final one.
Okay, so, this, this sounds like um, we are just made with the document, the final document.
Not the final, with the original, with the, the one that was approved.
Um, do you wanna say of the previous document or the draft?
Of the draft document, yeah.
And, well, I think there was also some dismay expressed, who's being responses to the.
Right.
Right.
Oh, good job.
Not, not, not just to the original document, but then any responses to the.
Okay, do you wanna modify that sentence more or just leave it?
Um, I don't think it hurts to memorialize that particular strength, isn't it?
How do you express that? If you're gonna object, you have to express.
While Parker expressed their dismay at the original document, as well as the response to the comments. Um, to the original document.
Perfect. Good, Jim? Alright, great.
Make a motion to accept the January ninth minutes as amended.
Alright, all favor? Alright, alright, general discussion, we moved through the health, health. Item B, uh, the Whittier original agreement, I don't know what to make of this all.
I suppose there shouldn't be an issue, it's so straightforward.
But did you see the email that Allison sent?
Hang on.
Something like that was kind of a miscommunication. I might, I suggest that based on Tim's.
Did it even go to Emily though? I mean, that's the thing that is always made, did it go to the chair who was addressed to? Or did Justin just intercept it and then deal with it? I mean.
That's a, I don't know.
Yeah.
But when you read the dog.
No, I think she showed, the way I read what he sent was that she must have shown it, shared it with him.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it should have gone to, I sent it to the chair of the school committee.
Right, and I think she shared it with the superintendent. That was the way I read, I mean, he didn't say that explicitly in his letter, but he mentioned that.
Yeah, so what they're saying is, when the original agreement was set up, the initial members were appointed by the school committee. Once their positions are over, any appointments come from the municipalities. Except if there's a resignation, then the school committee.
Yeah.
That's it, it's pretty straightforward, I don't know why this.
So I think in light of council's opinion from yesterday.
Oh, I didn't have a chance to read that, can you read the rise up?
So that's worth, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, that came in, uh, I think late yesterday, I know it goes, it's just a ton of information.
I saw it and then did.
So it, it seemed to, so it's a pretty, pretty lengthy opinion, but, but it distills to, he feels there. He, he points out that the Penticat regional district predated uh, uh, Whittier. So at the time, Whittier agreement was signed, we were part of a regional district, but he, he points out that there's uh, one would assume an intentional use of the word municipality, whereas earlier in the same paragraph, it refers to the school committee. The local school committee in some places, but in another place, it refers to the municipality. He's suggesting, and he's saying it's not conclusive, but he's saying, he thinks there's a very strong argument that that was done with intent. And that the appointing authority was intended to have been the municipality, meaning this chief elected board. So while it's not conclusive, I think with his, my, my suggestion would be to share his opinion with the school committee. Assert that you feel you ought to be properly appointing authority and would like to proceed as such. And uh, and.
Didn't Justin think the same thing though?
Yes. And well, but then he liked kind of.
Well, didn't he bring it up?
He brought it up to Whittier.
Yeah, they, yeah.
They didn't like it, so.
What did he say on a scale of one to ten?
It was zero. Five, zero point five.
See now, every other town in a regional district will have the same, are there any other towns? No.
Merrimack and Rowland.
Right, so they.
And Salisbury and Rowley and Newbury. Because they're part of the Triton district.
So are they, do we, do we happen to know if uh, is, is the Penticat school district appointing their? Or I'm sorry, is the Triton school district appointing their representatives to Whittier? Do we happen to know that?
I would assume so, only because they don't have local school committees.
I would suspect so because the intent has been, that was one of the things they wanted to change in the regional agreement, was the appointing, right? So the, the impression, and for years, this is how it's been done.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And it's to two thousand eighteen, it goes back to, oh, yeah, two thousand, any of these, that I know, or still.
Yeah, I mean, the, the point of that, I was just gonna say, as a courtesy, we all agree this makes sense, you know, can we just do it? And then got all, you know, legal.
Who did it?
Well, uh, Allison, I guess, uh, maybe it was Emily, I don't know. Alright, so.
So I do have this finance, you know, Penticat finance meeting on Tuesday.
Okay.
I think what I could do is go to that, we, we read it this way, our town council thinks this, and you can read the opinion, you know, it was uh, it came out after the packet, but I, I think it was late yesterday afternoon. Uh, but I think he, he's saying you have a strong point here and uh.
I don't think it's a strong point, I think it's the way the document reads, I mean, that's, I, again, this is sort of like regular tariffs. Just because it's been done wrong for years, doesn't mean you have to, um, you know, this is the way it is.
Yeah.
Made mistakes for years, okay, well bad.
Yeah.
Let's do it right.
So, but I, I think that uh, you know, I can't remember if he put this in the written, it is a pretty long opinion. Or it's, it is something he and I talked about by phone a couple of weeks ago when I first, first brought it to his attention, it might have been just last week, actually. Uh, but, you know, I think, I think he, either in writing or on our conversation, basically said like, if. It's, it would be all well and good if the board proceeded in that way, if Penticat school committee is gonna agree that that's valid. But he, he did, he did say that if there's gonna be any question as to validity of the appointment. There might need to be like a, a, a written agreement between the board and the school committee, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna like.
You're saying Whitty has resistance to this?
No, 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 uh, well, yeah, but, but no, Penticat, uh. We don't want anyone to question the validity of, you know, like, if you were to just appoint after all these years that Penticat appointed. We don't want there to be any question as to the, the, you know, standing of that appointed member.
I think Whitty has to make the statement that this is how the agreement reads, because again, you got the other, uh, uh, Triton. Would have to make their appointments differently as well. I think it becomes an issue that.
So I, I've got the email from the, from um, K P here, and, you know, so, and he's. Paragraph A of section one, Whittier reads as follows, down bottom of this paragraph, it says, um. Uh, and every year after the year in which these initial appointments are made, whenever the term of office of a, the term of office of a member expires. The member municipality concerned shall appoint one member to serve for a term of three years. From March thirty first of the year in which such appointment is required to be made. So how did we miss that? I mean, it seems pretty clear right there. How did we miss that before?
Yeah, it goes on to say, in my opinion, relatively strong argument can be made that the parties intended to give each municipality control over their representatives. On the now fourteen member school committee. And that's where it kind of draws the distinction between the use of the term school committee and municipality.
I mean, right in the agreement, the member municipality concern should, one, one member, I mean, it's in the Whitty's agreement.
Yeah, the point about Wes Newbury, not the school district being signatory to the agreement with a financial obligation, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a good approach, Angus, if you raise it with Rebecca, um, and Carol.
And Ju, and Justin.
Yeah.
Well, I, I read what Justin said, it's suggesting that we ought to be doing it anyway.
His first email.
Oh, okay.
And then there was a follow-up email. Where, and that's where it refers to this zero point five percent.
Well, after Allison sent me the email saying, we're just gonna keep doing it the same way, then he said, oh, I guess it was miscommunication, but yeah, so the, the whole thing.
That's a lot of background we don't have.
No, it's, it's in, it's in the opinions from Jim, it, it's not in the packet.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's uh, this has been, you know, past developing issue. So.
Okay.
But, but I think that, you know, I think the end game we want to arrive at is this board makes the appointment, and I think we want to assert that.
Oh, one hundred percent, it's right in there, agreement, I, I paced right out your own, so we need somebody by March thirty first.
Yeah, so I will uh.
You can have a time free.
Yeah, I nominate Rick.
So I think we'll make that assertion, we'll say we've consulted with council and uh, you know, and however we need to. Conify that, whether with the Penticat school committee or the Whittier school committee or both, that's our position.
Okay, great.
And uh.
Alright, get ready.
Worst case scenario, maybe there's a period of vacancy on the committee with this takes time to frank.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be much different than. That's practice, so.
Alright, page school conditions assessment review, we're gonna cover a letter.
Can we maybe table this, just in the interest of time?
Alright.
It's just, because we've still got executive session.
Yeah.
And we need a week from tonight, so.
Alright, so, um.
Well, we can spend an hour and a half on that now, can't we?
You can stay after and do it, yeah.
Um, is, is it in the uh, uh, separate? I don't see it in the.
What?
The page school.
Uh, no, we haven't, we haven't posted it to the web.
No, I didn't see it in the packet, so that was just a general discussion that you wanted to have?
Uh, well, there actually was a, you shared the, the, there were two versions shared in the last two weeks.
Right, I'm just, I just meant in the packet, I didn't see it, so it was a clear, oh, alright.
Yeah, I mean, the nutshell is, is so I think Elisa did a nice job at taking a crack at a distribution letter. Ideally, you know, we can have this board like write its own letter, you can use that as, you know. And then I, you know, and then we can, when we do push it out to the public, there's a transmittal letter with it, so. So, you know, I can take Elisa's draft and, you know, refine it, or maybe, maybe someone else can, I'm just. refine it or maybe, maybe someone else can, I'm just, I'm, you know, I got a budget to do, but.
So what's our timeline to get that out and?
There's no hard timeline. I think if the board is, is comfortable that the report as received is what you want to push out, which I think you are, then it's just a matter of getting the messaging right, whether that's with a transmittal letter, a website post, all of the above, those kinds of things, so. It's, I think getting it out, you know, in the next couple of weeks will be good, just to, but it's definitely not something that has to happen. You know, in the next week or the next two weeks, so, you know, I think with budget a week for tonight and um, you know, I just, yeah, I, I, I'm not gonna have five minutes toward this issue, right?
Well, let me take a look at it.
I, I think we're gonna give it a couple of weeks.
But you have Elisa's, you know, I think that's a great start.
Yeah, alright. Um, anything you want to talk about on the project priorities list?
No, tonight.
Okay, and we already talked about town meeting, location and date, right? Or?
Yeah, but while we can talk date, we talked about a potential Saturday. I like that idea, did we want to talk about maybe which Saturday? And and I can check availability and then a week from tonight, we can, you can head down the date and. Uh, so I guess why don't we, we'll look into availability for May third, which I think would be best because that's before the election.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm just afraid people are gonna balk at having it on a Saturday, but I mean, it's worth a shot. I mean, there have been people who've been interested in that rather than a weeknight, so.
What we'll do, well, we, we already have a hold on the Monday, the twenty-eighth. We will ask if it's available both the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And we'll ask if it's available the third, and then a week from tonight, you can decide which of those two you want to do. And Jim, can you help me uh, remember a follow-up on that one? Thanks.
Uh, okay, nothing on the project priorities list? Except for something else coming up, which is good. Um, any questions on the correspondence? Alright.
Well, actually, um. You notice of, I, 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 I mean, there was a a long bit from D P U on polls, was that a notice of injury? What's, what's D P U notice? I don't recall seeing that.
Oh, noticing.
Notice of injury in.
I think I was probably supposed to say inquiry.
Oh.
Uh, yeah, no injury.
We're not talking about the polls?
We can if you want, that was just correspondence.
Oh, I was gonna say, Butch should be involved with that, I would assume. Um, and I have two comments. Whenever they're going to put them in, they should be higher.
They should say.
Okay, because remember on Main Street when they're placed in the mood of trees don't hit them as much, uh, also, there's a number, few in town. They should have four to, four foot clear from a pole on a sidewalk. We've got some on the sidewalks, the snowplow goes off into the street, they can't do it, so.
So do you want to have this on an agenda for a discussion?
I don't, no, doesn't matter to me. If you're gonna respond with comments, that would be it.
Alright, what I'll do, I'll, I'll, we can share this with Butch, uh, his comments aren't due until March eighteen, so there's a little time. Uh, we can get his thoughts, and you can come, come in with a draft sometime in maybe early March, uh, or by, by early March. And then you can, I'll, I'll take note of those, uh, I think that's, I think these are the kinds of things they send statewide, most people don't respond. If we do respond, we'll probably be heard.
Yeah.
So I think that's great that we have.
I'm assuming nobody else read this entire thing. I read, I just. I mean, there was.
I didn't.
There's like seven stages of it, or maybe not.
Well, I scanned it too.
Chris read it carefully.
That's right, let's see your notes, Chris. Alright, and I searched for relevance.
On corporate audits?
Yeah, prevailing wage. Be in compliance, I assume.
So I sent that to the health department and have asked them to uh, review the contract to make sure that we are at uh, in compliance or are gonna be in compliance. And I think the date to respond is coming up. We basically put that on them to respond because they.
They signed that the contract.
They signed the contract, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that's something that, uh, yeah, Rebecca corresponded with that. She did get a, a response back from uh, uh, Rachel. Uh, I don't remember exactly where that stands, uh. Yeah, I think we have to respond by
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth, so we need to make sure that they uh. Follow up.
You? No.
Maybe they can get the third party person to do it. Alright, we move that we recess to executive session for N G L chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, twenty-one eighty-six and twenty-one eighty-seven, or return to open session for the purpose of adjourning, um, very. On favor, on the wild.
Alright, the uh, board will be recessing to executive session and res- uh, res- returning to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment, so this, that means the uh.